Alright, we're gonna call the meeting to order at 4:01 PM. Roll call, action filed.
Here.
Nate Brewer.
Here.
Lee Perriman. Laura Colletti here. Alright, invocation will be provided by Steve Masters. I'm working ready.
Bill, all right, thank you for this day, thank you for our many blessings, please be with us today as we make decisions that will affect our community and help us to keep that in mind and help us live with everything we do. Just stay with me.
Alright, can somebody roll that up so we can understand from the place the flag is behind it?
We can look through it.
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a report for us?
No, I have not, so go ahead with proceedings.
Alright, so the first item on the agenda, I need a motion by a council member to adopt or amend the agenda.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
No old business onto new business, action that is necessary to approve resolution number ninety-nine dash twenty-two four rescinding resolution number ninety-five twenty-two four and to authorize the mayor to execute the warrant purchase agreement for the issuance of general obligation warrant. City clerk president to read resolution number ninety-nine dash twenty-two four into the meeting minutes.
Yes ma'am, she's got it.
What do I?
Green folder.
Green folder.
Oh.
I'll get it.
I'm sorry. Alex, who's gonna brought it? Sorry. And Walter was supposed to be here, he'll probably come in right soon. Um, she's been, yeah, she's gonna explain it because the, um, yeah, and you can explain why we're having to do this.
Okay, um, according to Piper and Sandler, we need to increase the interest rate to five point seven percent and change the last payment date from February first, twenty fifty-four to April first, twenty fifty-four.
And then when I talked to Walter on the phone on the way here, I asked him, I said, why did the interest rate change or go up? He said, we're still set to have the same interest rate that we've talked about, and he said, this is a parameter just like the dollar amount. So it's not saying that the interest rate is gonna be the five point seven, he said he had to put in a parameter.
God, that still scares me.
You ready? Resolution ninety-nine twenty-two four, a resolution rescinding resolution ninety-five twenty-two four and authorizing the execution of a new warrant purchase agreement for the issuance of the general obligation warrant. Be resolved by the city council, the council of the city of Silicata, Alabama, the city, as follows. Section one, the council has ascertained and has hereby find and declare as follows. The council adopted resolution seventy-one dash twenty-three, declaring the intent of the city to issue in one or more series in honor before September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, its general obligation warrants for the purpose of financing the cost of various capital improvements in the city. The council adopted resolution number seventy-four twenty-two four, in which the city engaged Piper, Sandler, and company, the underwriter, to serve as underwriter of the warrant. The underwriter has reported that in light of current market conditions, it is advisable and necessary for the city to enter into a new warrant purchase agreement, the warrant purchase agreement with the underwriter respecting the sale and delivery of the warrants and updated parameters. The council adopted resolution number ninety-five twenty-two four on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, to authorize the execution of the warrant purchase agreement with the underwriter. It is necessary to rescind resolution ninety-five dash twenty-two four in its entirety and desirable to authorize the mayor to enter into a new warrant purchase agreement with updated terms as outlined in section two. Section two, authorization to execute warrant purchase agreement. The council hereby authorizes and directs the mayor to execute the warrant purchase agreement between the city and the underwriter. Providing the warrant purchase agreement include the following parameters, among other terms and conditions. The aggregate amount, the aggregate principal amount of the warrants may not exceed the sum of forty-two million dollars. The underwriting discount for the warrants may not exceed twelve dollars and fifty cents per one thousand dollars. The final maturity of the warrants may be no later than April first, twenty fifty-four. The net interest cost for the warrants may not exceed five point seven percent. And the sale, issuance, and delivery of the warrants shall be approved by the ordinance of the council authorizing such actions and setting out the definitive terms of the warrants, adopted and approved this twenty-sixth day of August, twenty twenty-four.
I'm just, I'm confused because when we initially set that parameter in previous resolution, he said it's just a parameter outlier, making sure it don't go over. Well, if that was worst case, maybe it won't.
I don't know, we can either call him on the phone.
I'm fine with it, but.
I have his number.
Yeah, and he's supposed to be here, and we can wait.
I'll talk to him about it, but you get what I'm saying?
I do, and I asked him, and that's what I told him, he said, we were still set to have the same interest rate that he discussed with us, he said he had to put in a parameter term and as a resolution rate to not to exceed, that's just like the forty-two million dollars. So it's the same thing that we voted on the other night, but the day of the last payment, the month of the last payment changed, and then he upped the parameter on the, um, on the interest rate. So if we don't wanna do this, we can wait till Walter comes, and then we can call a special call meeting and do it, because I think in order to do this, the September fifth meeting would've been too late.
Yeah, that's fine.
The September fifth, the September fifth meeting? It's not on.
Forty-two billion a max on this city can borrow with this collateral.
Right now, from what I understand, we're only getting, what, thirty-six million? We're only getting thirty-six million, he said he had to put in a parameter not to exceed the forty-two million. And as we all know too, even if we get forty-six million, there's some money that's coming off top, we're not gonna receive forty, I mean, we're not gonna receive thirty-six million dollars.
And the point of the negotiation of all of this, you've always got, have to have the ability to move as you negotiate, so we will not have a particular reason to ask for forty-two million unless forty-two million is cheaper than thirty-nine point nine. There may be all sorts of things that are baked into this that create an advantage for us to borrow more or less.
And also too, I told him to sign all of us up, we're gonna actually be able to see the purchase of the bond happen. He asked me who I thought would want to be involved in it or see that, so I told him to sign all of us up. So, and the way it is, I guess they're gonna put it out there and people are gonna bid on it and we'll see who actually buys the bond. So, but I mean, but it's okay.
That's gonna be on September fifth. That's gonna be on September fifth.
Yeah, and that's gonna happen on September fifth, that's why we added it to this meeting or we have a special call meeting, but if we're not comfortable, y'all know I don't mind.
I think, I think I'm not comfortable, I think you should.
And you can vote, no, it's the same, you voted no on last time, Laura, how do you feel?
I feel like I would proceed.
You sure? Alright, so action that is necessary to approve resolution number ninety-nine, this is what I just read, I'm sorry. I need a motion by council member to approve resolution number ninety-nine dash twenty-two four, rescinding resolution number ninety-five dash twenty-two four, and to authorize the mayor to execute the warrant purchase agreement for the issuance of general obligation warrant.
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Action that is necessary to approve the mayor to execute commitment letters with Build America Mutual Insurance Company for municipal bonds insurance policies to be issued in connection with issuance of general obligations warrant, series twenty-two four A and series twenty-two four B. Alex, do you have anything to add on this one?
No ma'am, but Walter did just show up, if he would like to take the floor.
Alright, so Walter, yeah, there were some questions about, um, about the first one, rescinding the resolution, and also what I had mentioned to you about the interest rate going up to five point seven. And so if you don't.
You can't go back.
Alright, well, I don't mind, y'all have.
It's okay.
Alright, so I need a motion by council member to approve the mayor to execute commitment letters with Build America Mutual Insurance Company for municipal bonds insurance policies to be issued in connection with issuance of general obligations warrant, series twenty-two four dash A and series twenty-two four dash B. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, now it's time for anyone to address the council, no action will be taken at this meeting, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for record prior to addressing the council. Do we want, we good?
I'm good, yeah. We went with it, so.
Alright, is there anybody else who would like to address the council before we end this meeting and proceed with our work session? Wayne, are you going to the microphone?
No ma'am.
Alright, having enough other business to discuss, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Time of adjournment is four eleven. Alright, thanks guys. Alright, and then too, um, just, we are gonna go ahead and start our work session, we're gonna go a little bit out of order because Ms. Moore has something she has to do, so I think we're gonna skip to her slide and then we'll just go back to the beginning. Laura from the chamber, and also too, I wanted to ask, I see some of you guys here are wearing many hats, are you gonna do the airport authority as well as, um?
If white doesn't get here, but I will be presenting with white.
And, and what about you, are you doing just one?
No, I'm gonna be with Eric, I'm on the historic mission.
That's what I was saying, okay.
I can answer any questions, but I'm not gonna share.
Alright, and I can't believe Cal isn't here, that's what I was just wondering, because I seen a couple of seats empty, I just wanted to know who was gonna represent those seats. Okay, alright, so we're ready.
Yes ma'am.
We're gonna do, um, the chamber.
Chamber, okay.
Yep. Sorry. I gotta find her.
Alex, I can see a tab for the, oh, uh.
She's the third one. Sorry, Walter. Do you have a mic?
I have. We're ready? I'm sorry, your voice is still. It's okay. And we're seeing that you're, um, and you're just asking to be, um, level funded, right Laura?
Yes, that's correct.
Nothing new, same old schedule. Still gonna do the same things we usually do, promote Silicata the best way we can.
Yes, we're continually working with, um, new businesses. Fortunately, we're still a very relevant resource for them as they begin their process of discovering, um, how to start a business, what to do, what the next steps are. And so we're, we're working towards, um, continuing that collaboration with the city, with the county, um, and the small business development center in that area. So, yes, we're still doing the same things we're doing and expanding, um, all that we can do, we're really beginning to venture out in the area of innovation and incubation, um, in hopes of being a good partner with the earth project. So that is going to be, um, some area of focus that we're going to extend or expand our resources into, um, we've got some research happening right now to figure out how to best do that.
Great, 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 kudos on, uh, getting the artists here to do those murals and stuff, especially, it's beautiful, it's been a long time coming.
That was a collaborative effort between us, the beautification council, the arts council, and the Silicata home professionals, and, um, it was important to us to continue, um, building that in downtown, that is an attraction to draw visitors, is a photo op. We've already started discussions for additional murals, which, um, will now be placed on the Alabama mural trail, which is a statewide recognized, um, effort through the University of Alabama.
Good, good.
Well, thank you so much for everything that you do, Laura, I, I can attest that I think everything that you put your hands in, it just gets bigger and bigger every year.
Well, thank you.
I mean, so.
An amazing team, um, that I work with, which allows all of that to happen, and, um, that's where the majority of our funding goes towards is, um, our salaries, um, for that amazing team, and so that's very appreciative from our perspective to allow us to assemble such a great team.
Well, thank you, I'm telling you, I say you're a big part of the reason why all of our, um, most of our people get excited about the holidays, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, it's just, uh, that's the fun part of what we get to do, one of the many fun things we get to do, so.
Do you guys have any more questions for, do you have any questions for us?
I don't, I just appreciate your support and thank you, um, for trusting us to, to handle all of these programs and initiatives for our region.
Thank you, you don't have to say, you can leave.
So, the beautification council is gonna be briefed by Tara Douglas, um, however, she has a client right now, so she asked if she could go at five-thirty, if not, I can talk to it, but we prefer to wait on her.
Please go on to the next one.
Yes ma'am. The Ark of South Talladega.
T C R Chau here, right?
So, the Ark.
No, oh, I've got a question for her.
Um, I, I'm gonna try to make this sweet, and thank y'all so much for always supporting us, I see many in this room that have, have helped, uh, make the Ark what it is. Um, just a quick story, y'all know, um, that we are a center that helps adults with disabilities, one of our, uh, guys actually lost her mother, and I'm sure y'all all know who I'm referring to. Without our center, um, that individual would not be able to do anything, she just sit at home. We got two new participants from Silicata this month, and we actually have a third coming in, uh, hopefully next week. So, um, and y'all know a lot of them, probably Isaiah, and, uh, um, he is a who, but.
My Isaiah from the hospital, good.
So, uh, we've got him, and then we've got another guy that came from Anderson whose sister works in, um, in Silicata, so they just moved here, so, um, we're growing, and I know I have asked for, um, uh, an increase. Obviously, times are, are tough, and, um, that goes to a lot of manipulatives that we do when we take them places, they would be sitting at home in front of a TV, so, um, at least they can come and enjoy, um, learning, and then, like I said, we, we, we took them to Blue Bell today, they enjoyed Blue Bell, we took them to Bowl, uh, last week. We try to take them many places that, uh, otherwise they wouldn't get the opportunity to, to do.
So Leah, your increase that you're asking for, would you say is it for gas, I mean, is it for like the stuff that you buy, and, and I'm just asking, I just, you know, I just like to see a list of things that you're, um, asking for the increase.
Gas, uh, we take them every day to either, uh, Silicata, the First Baptist, and they play basketball, or we take them to the track, um, we take them to the library, they do art projects. We, by the Department of Mental Health, are required to go over, um, survival skill signs, so we, we've purchased, uh, fire extinguishers for them, we've purchased weather radios for them, we've purchased helmets for them, we've purchased first aid kits for them, things like that, that a lot of them are indigenous and might not can afford those things. Um, we've been working with them on, there's two of them that are trying to take their driver's test. Um, and the one that is coming actually has her driver's license.
So do you guys pray for that as well?
Mm-hmm, so we, we, um, we have taken them to, um, Rockford's a little bit easier than driving to Talladega, there's not as many people, um, per se in Rockford on a Tuesday. Um, so we've actually taken, now they've, they haven't passed it yet, but we're trying to work with them on that, so different programs we're trying to, to work with them on.
So forgive me, I probably should know this answer, but I do, do you guys provide a meal for them?
No, they bring their own, uh, their own lunch, um, so we just, we drive them, we, we have to pick up the children's birth safe, we work with Safe, and Safe helps deliver ours, Silicata guys, but they pay a dollar a day to, or a dollar to and from each time, so two dollars a day.
So when you go to Children'sburg, they're, they're paying to come, okay, alright, good deal. That's what my question was, because I know, I think we charge, if we go to Children'sburg, we charge too, so I'm saying, I don't, I, I would hate for us to charge on that end and not charge on that end to help offset, just because fuel and oil is, is spent.
I know I've talked with you guys about, uh, talking with Children'sburg, and I, I have, uh, sat in front of them before, um, I'm trying to knock down that wall, so.
Yeah.
So, they don't assist financially, okay.
Well, and there's some reason behind that, and we won't be there until, we give, we give.
Um, I, you know, I'll always be sweet and love Jesus on that, so, um, but I'm trying to knock down that wall, so that they can help, uh, participate, because we do have, uh, six, and the one that has her driver's license is actually down in Fayetteville. So, um, without the, without us, they literally would not have anything, but also too, as a parent or a, a child who has had a parent that had a debilitating disease, it, a center like us is also, um, is also helpful for the caregiver, and they're able to go to, uh, the grocery store, to the doctor's office, and have a moment to themselves, um, because they, you know, they, our guys, they are needy, I mean, they talk a lot, come, if you wanna talk, just come to our, uh, our center. Um, but, uh, they're happy, so they're happy with us, so we just appreciate what, what the city council does for us.
Well, we appreciate you, sis Leah, um, and thank you so much for even reaching out to Children'sburg, especially since you guys service them, but don't be so down because you still have to come and ask us, because I mean, we are in the position, we still have to take care of our.
That's right.
So, um, is there anything else you wanna add to this list besides gas, and I put down driver's licenses, because you know, as of right now, we're taking everything into consideration, so I wanna make sure I just have all my notes, you know, for everybody that is asking for increase.
Like, when you go to Blue Bell and stuff, are y'all paying for their ice cream, or if y'all go to the fair, paying for their stuff?
Yes, we are, we pay, like bowling, we paid for bowling, we took them last year to Chattanooga, took them to, on a train ride, some of them have never ridden a train. Um, I tried, and I've told y'all before, I took them to go yoga, I try to do fun things that they would not normally get to do, um, and I try to think outside the box, like what would, some of them that would never get out of the city of Silicata or city of Children'sburg, um, wanna do, and I'm trying, like I said, there's only so far I can go, um, because we don't have a nurse on staff. And one of our guys, uh, is part-time, and she actually works full-time, um, so we just, we just appreciate everything, and some of those, Tiffany, are manipulatives, like where we might get, uh, fake money, and we're working with them on money, and, uh, where somebody needs to learn how to, uh, trace their name or remember their phone number. Those even teaching skills, um, we use.
Well, thank you so much for that, and thank you for explaining too, so we do appreciate you and everything you guys do over there at the AIC, and, um, I think if we have any, uh, more questions after this, we'll, we'll protect you.
Okay. Y'all need, y'all will need to stay?
You might as well say.
Welcome to. You probably don't want to.
Thank you so much, Leah. Thank y'all, thank you.
Um, Nicole, yeah, that's what we wanna make sure, so, um, because now in the budget meeting, we're just taking everything into consideration, so you guys will have, um, the level funding number and the, um, additional number and who requested what additional, right? So then we have our, um, next man to decide.
It's on your spreadsheets already.
I knew, that's what I said, I didn't have, I left mine in the car, sorry. Thanks again, Leah.
Thank you.
And then too, I mean, I hope y'all made your notes too, so don't forget.
I'm good.
What these increases entail.
Right.
CDA.
Well, Tiffany, we can get right to it, I mean, our, our increase is, is mostly due to the need for a part-time director. And that is the goal right now for the CDA, because we do realize it's, it's would be new to how we operate, so we would, we think moving into a part-time director makes sense, building sort of what those duties are on top of kind of how Brian's already been, um, operating is the smart way to do. So, I, I mean, I know everyone, it's coming to you guys and from their own perspective, and you guys are making decisions based on, uh, all the pieces put together, so just give me a second to kind of look through the CDA glasses a little bit, and kind of give you the perspective on, on how we sort of see the CDA functioning with a part-time director. So, you guys, uh, give us an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars, and also I think we have to consider the Net Site Agreement, which is what we're administering or managing that contract with the city on recruiting businesses to our community. So, in the first year of our Net Site Agreement, um, through all the projects that were executed, of course, every time a project happens with the Net Site, there's a success fee, right, so we're considering that as well. So, the revenue in year one through that agreement was ninety-six thousand dollars, five hundred, yeah, ninety-six thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Those are estimates, I don't have access to actual tax, tax revenue, those were conservative estimates on the anticipated tax revenue of these types of establishments and what they'd expect in our market, okay? So year one, that was a ninety-six thousand, five hundred and thirty dollar net revenue. Year two, because you don't have the success fees, right, success fees are given in year one to Net Site, year two, that looks like one hundred and eighty-six thousand, five hundred dollars to the city of Silicata in tax revenue. In year three, because we had projects, additional projects roll over, and then you also have to consider ta, uh, success fees in that number, but that number is up to three hundred and sixty-six thousand, five hundred dollars of net revenue. Year four, that number is three hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars and five hundred, and year five is the same, assuming no other projects actually happen. So those are, that's tax revenue generated through those agreements and managed through the Commercial Development Authority. Uh, we, I'm not talking about, um, individual business, but there's a lot of, lots of things in the pipeline right now that would also add to that, there's a big development talk and other individual, um, businesses moving, so right now in the pipeline, we roughly have about two million, four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of net revenue potentially coming to the city of Silicata through those pipeline projects, and that's over the next five years, if you do a total of five years, that's twelve million, fifty-five thousand dollars over five years. And so, the, what I would say is the, the need for a part-time position, to me, it's, it's really a no-brainer, because what we're asking the Commercial Development Authority to do is volunteer the time it takes to do a lot of these tax incentive, um, documents that you guys have seen, Brian's put all that together, he's put a lot of legwork, and I'm gonna give him a lot of credit here, because we're mostly on the CDA, a lot of small business owners, and we, we don't have time to run two businesses, right, we're trying our best to run our own small business. And Brian is in a position where he has some time, but you know, he's also got his own small business, around Christmas time, he's crazy busy. Uh, it's, to me, just from my seat, it's a little unreasonable to expect the CDA to perform at the level it's performing right now with volunteers. It's, uh, it just seems a little unfair, and we feel like with, with everything that we got in the pipeline and the tax revenue that we're gener, helping generate for the city of Silicata, this, this makes a lot of sense, um, to have somebody in a position to actually do that and not ask a volunteer to.
You answered my first question, I was gonna ask you what, um, the director did.
Oh, well, there's more to that, they gave me a whole list of stuff to talk about, um.
And also too, how, how far in that Net Site contract are we, and are we?
We're in year three.
Year three, and what is it?
It's paid for, so. Yes, oh, without a doubt, it's paid, it's already, it paid for itself in the first year, we're in year three of it, and it's a three-year agreement, and I think the, there's clauses in there about success, that additional years added with success, I'll have to go back and look at that, I'm not real positive on the language there, but we're in year three.
Do we have enough, um, vacant commercial property to where we would need to renew that contract, do you think?
Oh yeah, yeah, and especially with the potential coming up, we've got a, potentially a lot of property that'll be available, and think about like the Milo's side, and it got filled in no time, um, and a lot, that was a lot due to part and operating the Net Site.
So you can go ahead, I know you were finna, you was looking at, you said they gave you.
Yeah, so the workload description, of course, you guys have the job description and your, I'm not gonna go through all that, you guys have that, but, um, you've seen the work that goes into those tax incentive, um, But, um, you've seen the work that goes into those tax incentive, um, documents that Brian puts together for you guys. And a lot of times that's a lot of work because it's a lot of back and forth between you guys, lawyers and the potential person. But networking, business visits, recruitment, incentive package development, um, relationship building. You know, here's what I would say too about the net site agreement. If you had a full-time director, might be less of a need for that, right? Because the, the director should be doing a lot of the things that our net site contract is doing. So right now you're spending what? It was fifteen thousand the first year, ten thousand year two and ten thousand in year three. And, uh, um, there might be a relationship there with a group like Net Site, but the demand for, uh, third-party people go down when you have a director. Because they're actually doing the job part-time or full-time.
So you're thinking maybe if we, um, if we, this is something we want to implement, maybe in a couple of years, we wouldn't have to enter, enter into an agreement with someone like Net Site.
I, I think that would be something we should definitely explore, be able, be able to go forward, allow us to have a part-time director. Yeah.
What about, um, what about like insurance or something? That wouldn't, like, that wouldn't matter. Okay, Alex in your head though, so you don't have to answer. Um, I got another question that's probably a little weird. If we were to fund this, what, what would we just give them monthly payments?
Well, that would be monthly payments. Yeah. Just like you do now.
An appropriation.
Yeah.
It'd be the same appropriation you guys, you guys would pay a director, right?
Yeah, correct. That's exactly how it would work. And, um, two, we don't know that what we're asking for is going to fund a part-time position. If it doesn't, then the CDA will come out of the, the Delta, out of pocket for the Delta because we do have some funds. We just don't have the kind of funds that, to sustain this, right? We need, we need, we need help from the city to do that. Because a lot of the funds that are in the CDA coffers right now are thought about for the benefit of our downtown communities and things of that nature. So when we generate income or have income in, in our coffers, we hope that just gets reinvested back out into the community. So I would never look at our budget or our, our, um, our bank account numbers and say, well, they've got money to pay for. Because that's, that's supposed to be reinvested into the downtown. So this yearly, this yearly cost, we would expect the city to help with, with that.
I've got another question. If this were, um, to be implemented and your budget being increased by the thirty-five thousand and you don't hire, um, you don't get to hire a director, that money goes back, it will go back to the city, right? If that's what is appropriate. So.
No, once we give them the money, the money's theirs unless you guys ask to work back.
That's what I was.
I mean.
Because we will write them the full appropriation.
If you give us that money, we're going to try our best to find a director because right now we've got somebody who's spending fourteen, fifteen, eighteen hours a week of his own volunteer time. And so we don't want him to do that.
Okay. So you already have someone in mind?
Oh, no. No. We wouldn't recruit until, no, until we know that we've got money to, to actually do that.
Are you looking at hiring someone from Sulicaga?
Well, that would be, that would be a priority. I mean, I, I would think regionally, we wouldn't look anywhere outside of our area.
So I mean, I try our best, I would say. What they're, and I've been their liaison a whole time, been on his council. And the turnaround they've had from when Brian and his crew, now the current, uh, board has gotten in there has been, you know, twenty-eight weeks. And it, I'm not meaning to say anything towards Brian or any, any of y'all, but it can't continue. Like it's going to wear them down. Where they can't continue this trend, upward trend. They've got, something's got to heal.
I, I can really get examined. Uh, so Brian had to step down for a little bit, right? He had some health, health issues he had to address. So guess who the chair was? The vice chair? Well, guess how much got done when Brian wasn't there? I mean, I'm running my own business and I have a hard time keeping everything straight on that end. So having to do, in, in my view, this is kind of what the city is. It's really like running a, a separate business here. And I just couldn't do it. I mean, there's no way for me to operate a small business and do what Brian was doing, put it in twenty hours out of bed, stretch. Unreasonable, I would say.
Well, I'd as much appreciate it. Y'all have done a lot.
Thank you.
And it's paying for itself right now. So just thinking somebody that's full-time with the additional help of Brian and, and the board when needed. And, you know, it's going to, it's going to tend for.
Yeah, we would like to function as a board, which is, you know, checking.
Both authorities are supposed to, who's taking their slip?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
My only thing, my only, I mean.
I would say though, that we're sustaining ourselves, we've done that maybe five or sixfold at this point. Yeah. But it comes to y'all. It doesn't come to us. It comes to you.
I, I mean, my only question, you know, it's, it's not really a question, and I, and I agree with you. I think it is something that we do need to, um, entertain. It's just, I guess I'm looking at, as increasing your allocation and you don't get to hire one for six months and you still get the full allocation.
That money's tied up.
Yeah, that's, that's my only thing. Is there a way, if we were to consider this Alex, to where the money could just be released on high, on higher of a, um, person? Or like say they don't hire a person for eight months, then it's eight months worth of, you know, you divide that by twelve and.
Right. We can work it out with the contract and.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's my only objection if this was to be considered. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Contract can just disperse upon, feel like.
That's a step in the right direction.
Yeah. That's my only thing. I know that probably sounds weird.
No, it makes sense.
Okay.
So I can get Ryan on his contract?
Okay. Do y'all, um, have any question, more questions for Ryan? Thank you.
If y'all blew it out.
I mean, now's the time to, you know, express your thoughts and maybe thinking something we're not thinking.
I, I just know there's a lot of different things that we want to do here in this city that's don't, that's going to get carried away today.
Well, we're not promising anything. This is just to be for consideration. That's why I want to make sure all my questions are answered. Because I may not be able to answer them later, but I just wanted to make sure something like that could be considered if we were, we were going to entertain this.
And also keep in mind our revenue at that point in the city that wouldn't be here without.
Exactly. I agree with that, Ashton.
I think I asked everyone. Do you have any questions for us, Ryan?
I don't. If I could speak up, as far as the hiring of a, a part-time director, that's just a matter of, like you said, we can put it in the contract. We've got to, got to work out a new one, right now anyway, put it in the contract. And if those appropriations are increased, um, once we reach agreement to hire somebody.
Well, thank you. And we'll take it, um, into consideration. I think I got all my notes and I've asked all my questions. And Ryan doesn't have any questions for us. So thank you, Ryan. You can't really throw yet.
No, okay. Who's next?
Um, looks like Ms., uh.
The industrial development board?
He's not, Mr. Calvin, right?
That means we get to cut. Ain't here to defend it, Sid.
All right. We'll just push him, just make a note because we've already pushed two of us to the back. The beautification council. So let's put him up under the beautification council and then we'll go on to the, um, historical note.
Feral Dogs of Avondale will also go at five-thirty by Terry Douglas.
Oh, alright. Well.
She's, she had a client.
Okay. Terry's council.
Uh, Sulicaga Airport Authority.
Sorry.
You don't get out of that.
Well, this is a great way to start this, our out, but I, I don't want Ryan to panic that we, we've asked for more money than him. No, I think to panic, um, there, but we, what we are asking for, if you see the difference, the sixty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty, um, I just want to run through some numbers to help you guys understand what, uh, we've done. Um, we, uh, last year, what we're actually requesting is the difference would be our level funding, which we got last year was, um, thirty-eight thousand. But our level funding should be forty-one thousand. So that's all we're asking for. Um, in this year, calendar year twenty-twenty-four, uh, we've had several maintenance expenses. We had to, and all of our maintenance expenses to some degree come to us through the FAA stating that either we fix it or we get fined or we get in trouble or that they will close the airport, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, earlier this year in January, we've replaced a windsock at twenty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, we've repaired three sets of hangers roof. Uh, that was the total of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. To replace a runway light, it's twenty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, our grass and fuel systems, we had to update, uh, we, we bought a lawnmower and then we had to update our, um, fuel systems was twelve thousand, two hundred and fifty. FAA came out and said we had to, um, our fuel monitoring system was out of date. Uh, and they did not want to have to report us to, um, the EPA because they were afraid we were having leaks. That was thirty-two thousand. The tree removal, the sixty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty, it was down on the end, the Fayetteville side of the, um, airport runway. Uh, that was, see, we had FAA come in most recently within the last ninety days and say we had to cut, it was trees. When I say trees, I don't want anybody to think that we were cutting timber or anything like this. This was just shrubs, overgrowth and all of that. That was getting into, getting in the way so that when planes were landing or trying to take off on that end of the airport, it was an obstruction. FAA basically come and told us that we had to do that or we would be in violation and they could shut the airport down. Now, of course, uh, I wish Wade was here. Um, everything that we do is we get airport, our, our, um, hangers, we rent those out. We get rent, we pay, uh, our bills with that. Um, we sell fuel. We, any profit that we get, we use to help cover our costs of operating the airport.
Are those the only, so that was two. Are those the only two, um, streams of income you have besides, um, whatever the city puts in?
That's it. We have hangar rent, fuel cells.
And how many? We were going to ask the same thing.
No, but I, but I was just going to point out, you've reduced your dependency on the city a lot over the last decade. And you get a disproportionate amount of federal grants, large amounts of grants where the city has small matches. Let's just, let's just buy lots of money for small amounts. So this is the, this is the, these latest blips are things that just wouldn't be on a calendar.
Right. Now, this is our things that we, especially the sixty-two thousand, we were not anticipating that at all.
And this is not something you're asking for every year. It's a one-time hold-up plug and then you're.
This would be a one-time to help us because everything is out. The reason I shared what all I did share was to say that, um, the FAA has for the first time, excuse me, these are state funds, not federal funds. Uh, we are in the project. The mayor just said that we were doing a project. We are in a project where we have to have the, um, taxiway and some runway work done. Uh, that is a priority one from the federal government stating that any and all airports, if you've heard on the news lately, Shelby County, Talladega City, they were awarded some money and that is for the same project that we're working on and that is our taxiway. We've got to, we cannot do anything else. We're not eligible for any other funds until we get that priority one fund done. That is where the city is coming in and there is a match for that. I believe you guys voted on that several months ago to approve it. Thank you. We appreciate that. Uh, we'll get that done. That will be as local as we can get someone to come out and do those type of paving projects. Um, the next thing that we can start doing would be that fifty-fifty match for a hangers and that's where our income comes from. We had our last authority meeting on Thursday of this past week. We had a gentleman there. He asked to present that needs hangers and we have no hangers. We have like twenty-some like people on a waiting list for a hanger space.
What do you mean fifty-fifty match? Like for a grant or fifty-fifty?
A grant, yes, ma'am. It would be a grant that if we could, uh, if we could go in and say, we want to build a section of hangers. If we could come up with as the authority, some funds, but we have, any extra funds that we've had, we've kind of started to deplete those because we're doing what I would say would be maintaining the property. Now with everybody, as you guys know, I'm not trying to blame anything on COVID, but COVID slowed everything down. We have had some change of, um, personnel. Um, I think that Wade is doing a tremendous job out there. We are sometimes the first thing that people see when they come into our community. I will have to say that the golf course brings us in some really interesting people. We've had the Jonas Brothers at the airport. Uh, we've had a few, um, you know, if you're an Auburn fan, right? If you're an Alabama fan, some very important people of those teams have been in our airport. Um, their jets, they're, you know, they're university jets and all that. Um, we've had just, uh, ESPN votes come out for stuff that was going on at the course. So it's really exciting to see. And that's why Wade's not here right now is because, believe it or not, the airport is a twenty-four-seven operation. So he texts me and he says, I can't be there right now. Something's come up out here at the airport. So that means either we've got a jet that's landed and we're fueling that jet or we've got, nine times out of ten, that's what it is. So if we have, in order to stay in business, if we get a call and they schedule an appointment and they say they're coming through here at ten o'clock at night and they're landing, then we have someone out there that can put fuel in that plane. So we do have a full-time person that we pay for. It doesn't cost us anything. And we have a part-time person that the authority pays for. Doesn't cost you guys anything. Uh, we, we worry about all that in hopes that we don't bother y'all a lot. We really do not want to bother you a lot, but we do want to say that there are certain things, getting the shrubs and trees cut, that is an important priority that we've had to do. We, we, we are sometimes given a timeline that it's got to get done. And by the time we can get to you guys and ask is kind of after. Yeah. It's better to ask for forgiveness sometimes. But, um, that's not, so, so y'all don't panic. We're not going up a hundred and fifty-nine percent. But we would love if you would consider helping us cover some of the maintenance costs that we've incurred. And hopefully we won't ha, hopefully this year, we'll be get it over with. Everything will be nice. We've got our hangers. They're not leaking anymore. We were getting a lot of complaints, um, that the hangers will leak.
Oh, Chris, remember when we voted on the hanger, um, to fund part of that, I believe we did. Um, that was for the, like, the fourth row of them to go in and completely redo them or is that to build this one? So were we, were we fixing current ones or were we building?
It probably was, I, I wish Wade was here because he would be more up to quite, but I'm saying we haven't built any new ones. So I'm going to assume that those were repaid.
Rehabbing the.
Yes, repaired. Yes, sir.
But the goal is to, um, you guys do want to build more, right?
Yes. Because otherwise, I, I, you, you mentioned that the authority should be, I think, uh, Nate, you mentioned that authority should be self-sufficient.
Correct.
That is our goal. But the only way to get to there is we've got to figure out a way to produce more income. And logically that's to build additional hangers. In the last, I think, Mr. Perryman, he's been on our, uh, he, he is our liaison. We've increased hanger rent. Uh, we've increased our fuel costs. We don't want to increase those a lot because we're trying to compete with Alex City. Uh, there is a flight instructor in Alex City who says that they would come to Sulicaga, but there's no, we, we don't have any hangers. So we desperately need to, to save every dollar we can that we're making off our current hanger rent and our current fuel sales so that we can apply for these state grants and, and slowly add, if it's one at a time, uh, add those hangers so we can start producing additional.
And you recently reached an agreement with the industrial development board where they're going to give you some additional properties to develop hangers.
We are working on that. Yes, sir, current.
So, Art, uh, I was going to ask whether any, um, in the future plans to build some hangers, but I guess you have to acquire that property first?
We have a small section of property where we can build one set of hangers.
Do you have anything in, do you have any plans in place or like you got a goal? Maybe you guys have one new hanger in a year? Or is there anything like that in place?
We got to get this after twenty-twenty, I think in twenty-twenty-five, we can look at that. Until we get this, um, runway or I should say taxiway project out of the way, I think it doesn't do a whole lot good to. We can, we can hopefully plan on those things. But once we get that done, get that out of the way, that'll open us up for a lot of additional funds that we are not right now currently, we can't apply for because we haven't gotten that priority one done.
Do y'all have any more, um, questions? Do you have any questions for us?
No, I just, please just consider, I, I think we are vital. We do, just to remind you guys, we have lifeline, helicopter, all of that. If we close down, that could affect that. We, we did several years ago, and this may be what Ashton could be thinking about, is that the authority did several years ago build a hanger specific to the helicopter because we did not want it. It was having to be left in the weather. And with the weather that we have here in South, we didn't want something that vital to get a little ding and. And with the weather that we have here in south, we didn't want something that vital to get a little ding and.
About as sure a long-term as you're saying, good brother.
Yeah, hi, yes sir.
Well, sounds good, well, thank you so much for explaining all of that to us, Ms. Kay, and we will take it into consideration. We will, I think in our next meeting, once we find a lot, well, once we take all of this in and decide what's gonna be what, everybody will get some answers, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Can I talk about TCR just real quick?
Do.
Yes. Just real quick, I think that this may be the smallest one on y'all's list. So, I just wanna say thank you. Thank you for what you guys do, I hope that you realize we are serving children, high-risk, high-need children in the Drew Court area and in the Sulicaga surrounding area, we take that very seriously. Those children get a breakfast, they get lunch, they get a snack, they get, all of our children are enrolled in either early Head Start, Head Start, or First Class 3K. Our teachers are all credentialed, we are a licensed program. And I do believe that Drew Court is a three or four star with the state of Alabama and meaning it's a high-quality center. We are working on getting a higher star with that and just appreciate everything you guys do, so thank you.
Now, is this where the old board education, that's where this is going?
That's where, yes sir, that's where this is going.
What's the plans on developing that?
Oh, she, oh, she's excited, we're excited over that.
Is there a timeline?
Well, we, I, I had sent Ms. Alex an email today, I talked to Tiffany last week. I wasn't very darned, excuse me, when it comes to city politics, I don't know how you guys operate. So, I had reached out to Ms. Tiffany to say, "Where do we go from here? Is there going to be another meeting?" Because our architects are reaching out to us saying what's next. So, how I understand it now, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, is that what you guys passed last Tuesday is changing how that property is zoned. That gives us a little bit more freedom.
And I'll give you the copy of that ordinance to hand over to your architect and he should know what to do with it.
Yeah, and as soon as we get that, we've already had an abatement study done. We've, of course, purchased it and then we will go from the next steps there and hopefully be breaking around here soon.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, will you keep the Drew Court daycare center, will this be a separate facility?
It'll be a separate facility. Oh, no, 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 excuse me, we will close that, we will close that and it will all be moved over here, I apologize. Whole new facility.
Well, I will tell you, I appreciate it on a personal level, this is my grandson's first time getting to go to Head Start and he loves it, he told me, he said, he said, "This is the best thing ever," he said, "I don't even have to take my own toys." He said, "They already have toys."
Yeah, I'd kindly want to cordially invite everybody to come play with our toys, come read a book. We, you know, we went through a lot a few years ago, we fought hard to keep Drew Court. So, it's really hard for us to leave it, but we feel like that this will be a more accessible area. It is beautiful, absolutely, so pretty up on top of that hill.
But you'll be able to offer more services too, right?
Yes.
Because you'll have a bigger space.
Yes.
Less crowded, less square.
Right, so, we are out, completely out of space, so we cannot expand.
Lot of grass to cut.
Well, we, we've been doing that, we've been getting that done. If any of you had, had someone reach out and say, because there was some concerns with the grass, but we had a part on backboard for the tractor and.
I did it for about three or four years, so I know.
Okay, well, so good, I'm glad you, you're gonna be helping. Any other questions?
I don't have any, do you guys have any?
Mm-hmm, I'm good.
Well, thank you so much, Ms. Kay, we appreciate you.
Who might take the mic?
Hold on, let's see.
Ms. Jennings.
We're passing the mic.
Ms. Jennings, we just sent you the copy of the ordinance?
Here.
So, you'll have it.
Thank you, Ms. Alex.
Looks like it's gonna go to Ms. Dixon, and she didn't even come and sit at her seat at the table.
No, I'm not Ms. Dixon.
So, I guess you give it back to.
She's here, I seen her when she walked in, this is where the Sulicaga Historical Committee.
There you go.
I seen her when she walked in, I said, "She was trying to get out of, um, come on." You can't hide from us, Ms. Dixon.
I think I get declined because I know we have so much going on. But just to remind everyone of the reason we have Sulicaga Historical Commission is because we have a designated national register district and it is our responsibility to keep the pulse in this community to remind you that we have a heritage that goes back to our village in eighteen thirty-four, brought from Old Town to New Town in eighteen eighty-six when our railroad decided to cross tracks in what is now New Town, Sulicaga. We have a project that we think would be, once again, promoting the heritage of Sulicaga's marble industry. And there's a term called demolition, demolition by neglect that we have in the world of preservation and we have almost been guilty of that. And the Little Gansquarry Post Office, who was reciprocal of so many documents and stories and lifelines that built the marble industry in Sulicaga, that little post office has been sitting in, on city property since, I believe, two thousand and four. And the, the project now is to find purpose and use for that. Received an email this week from Jada Jones with the Alabama Historical Commission and she says that all the paperwork looks good to be able to give a nomination and recognition as an Alabama heritage landmark. So, we will be able to get another marker and I believe that's one of our requests. We realize the funding that's requested was for renovation and we had applied for a grant, but it was denied.
That's wrong by the answer.
Yeah, we hated that. But anyway, we are looking forward to marking a time capsule that was placed earlier by the Sulicaga Historical Association that we realize has never been marked and also to keep, be mindful for commission training. So, thank you so much and let's all be mindful of this beautiful heritage that we have here.
Amen.
I got a question, Ms. Linda, I see that you have the itemized list, but it's just one total price. So, is, do you have a breakdown, did they give you a breakdown of how much each item would cost?
They did, and that was one, that was one estimate.
So, that, so it's just one, it's just there'll be all this for the one price, it's not like line item?
It was line item, I was thinking, everything from painting to repairs and floor restoration.
Do you think, do you mind emailing us a copy of that list? Just, you know, because I mean, it would just be nice to see, like, it says, "Replace two window sashes." I think I'm blind today, I just, you know, it would be nice to see how much that costs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Linda, so, and thank you for coming to explain all of this to us and again, we'll take all of this into consideration and everybody will have some answers, I think, at the end of our next budget meeting. Y'all have any more questions?
No ma'am, thank you, Ms. Linda.
You have any more questions?
Good to see you, Ms. Linda.
No, sir.
Kusa Valley Rescue Squad.
Mr. Gallup.
Up until today, we haven't received anything, but he did submit something today. If he wants to come up and talk, that'd be great.
Can I brief before he talks, if you mind? Uh, Jody mentioned, reached out to me that has taken over along with Mr. Gallup and Mr. Carson Greer. They are revamping the rescue squad and Mr. Gallup has some information here for us today that what the city has always done for us, parts and labor machinery and gas and whatnot. So, the good thing is that the rescue squad is up and we are supposed to be in operating, correct, Mr. Gallup?
Slowly working that way.
Yes, sir.
Slowly working that way.
Thank you.
We're not going higher than that at all, that the rescue squad did take a nosedive, it did.
I'm sorry, Nate was talking to me, what took a nosedive?
The Russian Rescue Squad.
Okay.
The Russian Rescue Squad did take a nosedive when COVID hit, we had a lot of older gentlemen in there and like everybody else, they got spooked. We have some equipment in there that's needing repair, it's nothing that can't be fixed, we're gonna fix it. With the help of your city shop, we're gonna pay the parts, if y'all can help us with the labor. And I've been understanding that's what's happened in the past. We are slowly getting it back up, I've talked to your fire chief, Nate Osgood. Tell me what we can do to help you. What kind of equipment can we get that you don't need to spend money on that can help you? We have boats, got the boats in the shop right now, okay? Unfortunately, the guy working on the boats, family was in that accident down in Kusa County, that's being delayed right now. I do currently have a truck at your city shop that having a fuel system worked on.
Mr. Gallup, and there's some grants that y'all can apply for this area that we can't.
We are looking into that, yes, and that's, that's exactly what we're discussing. Jason Gordon, I don't know if any of y'all familiar with him?
Out of Hollins.
He's from Hollins Fire. He is looking at getting into the Russian Rescue Squad, matter of fact, I've got his application. He's gonna look at writing grants, we've gotta get a, we've gotta get certified with SAMS to get those grants. He's probably got Hollins Fire a million and a half dollars in grants and that's a lot for a volunteer fire department. He can start doing that here, it's gonna be great. We're gonna be a secondary response, we're not a first response. If we need to be a first response, we'll be one. But we thought we had that, y'all didn't have contacts. Yes, Mr. Greer is still the captain. Mr. Greer is eighty-three years old. We need his, we need his wisdom. He has reached out to Jody McVickin and myself, I've been with Sulicaga Gallops for thirty-one years, Jody's been with Sulicaga Gallops and he is currently the director for thirty years. He's reached to us, helped get this back going, we had Charlie Obar, Oak Grove's fire chief, he has now resigned from Oak Grove and moved to Florida. So, it's to me and Charlie, we have reached out, we do have some others getting interested and hopefully we can slowly build this back up, but it's all a volunteer basis.
And this money here is just, you need to help out, as you said, with the labor, just getting the things back to where they need to be?
I, I've never really understood what the city did and how much the city did. I was given a number a while ago, okay, fine. What I was told is the power bill's paid for by the city. We don't abuse the power bill, we don't even have a heat pump in that place that'll work right now. And how Culver come out and tell me, he said, "Chris, that unit's thirty-five years old." It's a R twenty-two unit, it's gonna cost out a fortune. So, first, let's see how, let's see where we're at next year before we can get that. I mean, I, so that's, that's tabled right now, but let's see where we can get. We can, we can heat another way right now or maybe cool, we don't really need an air conditioner. I was told about fuel and the power bill. Yeah, that.
And the generator.
It's big dust.
The city's paying for their fuel, their generator and their utilities currently. So far, we've spent one thousand four hundred seventy-nine dollars this year.
So, just the entire year?
Yes, ma'am, so far.
Do they own the building that they're in?
The Russian Rescue Squad owns the building, city owns the land.
I'm not, I'm not.
Thousand dollars per year.
Yeah, it's not, I'm not, yeah, I'm not objecting, I just wanted to know, like, do you have a list of what you plan to do with the money or is it just for labor towards the shop? I wanna make sure I'm understanding. So, what is the three thousand dollars gonna go towards?
He didn't request anything, he said. He didn't submit a request because we didn't have a contact, we did try to reach out.
Oh, so this isn't, oh, so he's not requesting anything?
Well, because we didn't know who he was until this evening, so.
It will be a simple.
So, how long has it, how long have we not given any money?
We, we gave them three thousand dollars last year, but we couldn't make contact with anybody this year, but we knew we were paying bills.
Did you contact the fire chief to get a contact?
I sure did.
So, so let me ask, I wanna make sure I understand, so out of the three thousand that we allocated last year, you're saying that one thousand is something that's always spent?
Right, so far we've only spent fifteen hundred.
Okay, so we're not, it's, we're not giving them any money, we're just, we're allocating three thousand and those bills.
And we pay the bills for that.
Okay, alright.
But now that we have a contact, we can share that information.
I mean, I can, I can tell you this, next month, the picture write a check to BFIS for our insurance for over eight thousand dollars.
Well.
So, I'm, you know, we're not asking for help with that, we're just asking to continuation right now of what, what we have been getting and we want the city to tell us what it is we can do to help you. What can we do to help the police department, what can we do to help the fire department? And other areas here in Sulicag, around Sulicaga.
So, this is what I wanna ask and forgive me if I sound crazy, so.
Go ahead.
Even though we, we allocated three thousand dollars last year, you only spent half. So, it, and I just have a thing with, don't judge me, I just have a thing with allocating money if you're not gonna use it. So, since you're getting it up and running and you still have some time, so stay with me, you still got some time because this is new, because we're probably not gonna have our next meeting probably for a couple weeks. So, so get a list of things that you are actually trying to do so we can come up with a solid number to see, you know, what we, we actually want to do or to give.
I can tell you this right now, we got seven vehicles sitting in there, all seven of them need new tires, all seven of them need the fuel systems cleaned.
I know, but.
And I need the city shops, and I'm, I mean, we're gonna buy the parts. Once we get these vehicles to where they're on the road and running, then we can start doing things.
So, it's maybe getting with Ed to see.
Yeah.
We've got to get it back going.
I know, and we, we want, we wanna make sure you get it back going because this is an important part of our community, but we just need to see, you know, okay, we can say, well, let's just level funding the three thousand dollars. And then here you are back in January, it wasn't enough.
So, could you just get with Ed and in the next week maybe, and say, "Hey, look, here's my seven vehicles, is this what I need going? What amount of labor do you think's involved?"
Ed's had one of my vehicles now for over a month, I can't get him to touch it.
Well, estimate per job, not per time, but the job, what it would be, labor hours wise. That way we know, okay, his labor charge is X amount, if you're doing this, spending this many hours on it, then that's what we can give. When you say you're gonna spend eight thousand dollars on an insurance premium, where's that funding coming from?
It's coming out of our general fund.
So, which is very significant general fund balance?
About ninety-five. Now, I will tell you, there, there is, there is forty thousand dollars here in a CD. There's forty thousand in a savings account, there's about nine thousand in a checking account. That eight thousand dollars is coming out of the checking account, we do receive tobacco tax ticket from the county.
That's not much, is it?
So, is that?
But when you look at eight hundred dollars a month, times twelve, and then I'm paying out eight thousand, how much operating do I have?
They have to raise, y'all have to raise funds as well.
Well, yeah, some of this money is, the savings account money is, and the CD money is what has been raised over the years. Right now, I'm telling you, when I say we're trying to get it back on the feet, that's what we're trying to do, get it back on the feet where we can help the city, get it back where it once was.
I, I don't think any of us have an issue with it, we just wanna see a list of items, I mean, and you have the items, just keep with Ed on those items, let him provide you with a later, an hour amount, so we'll know basically what that amount, uh, money was.
Man, I don't have, I don't have problem with that, that's what we do. I welcome any of y'all, if y'all wanna come out and see what's there.
Yeah.
And come, mediate yourself or even join in and help.
Well, I think we're gonna take everything that you said into consideration. Again, we just wanna make sure whatever we consider is, is gonna actually be able to, you know, you're gonna help because I mean, you said you gotta get it back up and running, so we don't, we don't know what you need. We don't, and it sounds like you don't know what all you need because there's just a lot of things that have, you know, fallen.
I don't know, I don't know the end resort dollar amount that I need, I know what I need to be done. I don't know what the end resort dollar amount's gonna be, so I don't wanna lose what little bit I was, we were getting from the city. None of it's being abused, I can promise you that.
I don't, I don't think that, I don't think any of us think that. It's just, um, the number just has to, uh, make sense to me based on what you're asking for. So what we'll do, Alex, maybe we can, uh, just have a separate conversation and get with him. And let's just try to see what all they got, you know, going on and what's gonna actually be used for the money. Because I mean, there's.
I think, like I said, these people, they, it's all about hours, uh, labor hours.
Because right now, we only do a reimbursement. They give us a bill, we pay it.
And then too, you guys can just say, hey, you know, we don't wanna know all this. You know, if that's how y'all feel about it and we just give the level, the three thousand dollars and we just don't spend over three thousand dollars. If that's what you wanna do. And whatever's over that three thousand dollars, they just, you know.
I'm pretty sure we send the trucks, need to fix, it's gonna be over.
Yeah, it's gonna be well over three thousand.
It's gonna, it's gonna go over.
But it's a significant startup, basically, because you're just getting back on your feet. I mean, it's, you know, that's not gonna be the yearly amount that you're gonna need every year because you've gotta fix everything to start.
I'm not, I'm not saying that either, I'm not, I'm not volunteering additional funds. I'm just saying, even if it's three thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars, it still needs to be in a list of what they're gonna spend the money on.
I think he's gonna give.
At, at this given time, we're trying to maintain what we had, we're trying to maintain. Let us get a better, let us get on our feet, get a better presence in the city. And then maybe next year, we come at you at an increase.
I have a question. Are we responsible for the storm shelter or y'all responsible for the storm shelter?
You know, I'll tell you what, I have no idea, I was told at one time that the city bought, paid, the city paid for that storm shelter.
And it needs work.
So if it's the city storm shelter, I can tell you this, the inside, the paint on the floor is peeling.
Yes.
I looked in the storm shelter last month for the first time and I was like, wow, okay. I don't know.
It, it needs some work. I, I encourage everybody to go out there and just look for yourselves and, and see what all they're doing. I mean, y'all put in a lot of work, especially in the last month, I've had the privilege of coming out there several times and I really appreciate what you're doing.
And really, just to be honest with you, I don't even live here. I'm doing this to help, I'm doing this because Carson asked me to do this. I actually live fourteen miles younger way in Clay County.
Well, we don't leave you here and hopefully you see that I'm trying to, like, get you to help me help you, so we're gonna.
That's what we wanna do. Like I said, thirty-one years of damage service, which I've been somewhat associated with the rescue squad, just not that active. Obviously, I haven't been active.
Well, hopefully we can just get together and come up with a plan to get it back active.
As long as, as long as we're agreeing to communicate and get it, get it back going, I'm good with it.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
And thank you so much.
Thank you.
We do need to look into that storm shelter, it needs some work.
Are, are you planning on taking me in?
Yes, I am. I'm going to take you there. It's not, it's not a tricky basis. Look, all the tape is done. I really need to look at it.
Miss Margaret's next.
Next, we have Earth.
Here we go.
Miss Margaret. Alright, we appreciate being invited to come back and, and share where we are with Earth. Isaac has some, uh, information for you and, um, I wanna pass out, just to kind of show you, you're gonna get to see a bit of a look. See if what is Earth actually gonna look like. I'm gonna ask for these back because they're.
You're gonna ask us that, is that?
No.
I see my name is on it.
Yes.
Thank you, both.
And you can take a look.
Thank you.
Also, um, we have, Isaac, is this book in?
It is.
This is a new version, the last time before the council, we did revision, we're constantly revising, um, all of our information. But this is a revised version of what you received earlier. But it really tells the story of what Earth, and this is another, let's see. But, uh, and Brian can really, he's the, the brain trust here that can really share with you exactly what is the site gonna look like. But I thought it was important for me to sort of talk about what's gonna be happening at Earth.
Yes, and we have some questions.
And how is that gonna impact? Yeah, how is that going to impact, um, the main building that you see there is the Eva Jane project. And that's, yes, that's the project now. Around it, you'll see the parking and you'll see how it moves over into the ag space. And I can share you, with you some, some concept, um, uh, pictures here and a schematic, but that may or may not be of interest to you today. But what is gonna be happening at Earth? So you look at Eva Jane, that's where we're starting now, and our goal is to begin renovations of, uh, Eva Jane probably late November, early December. So we're really on a fast track right now, along with, uh, uh, completing our capital stack for the new market tax credits that we'll pay for. We don't wanna borrow any money, that will pay for the renovations and partially of the construction and of the regenerative ag space. And so, uh, what, what this is gonna, you heard Laura, uh, Laura Strickland talk about innovation, incubation, entrepreneurial ship. That will be at the heart of what we do at Earth. And we have got tremendous partners that are coming in, not just to live there, but to also do the work. So Earth will be a place for training. You know, years ago, we had trade schools. Well, we don't have those anymore, but what we do have in working with the schools are career pathways. And SAFE right now does a lot of work with the Sulicaga City Schools, Talladega County Schools, Clay County Schools, Cusa County Schools. Uh, all across the, the, the region in terms of helping these, uh, high school students and adults follow a career pathway. And to get that upfront training that they need. At Earth, they'll be able to follow that training. For example, tiny house construction. We will have at Earth, modern manufacturing and tiny house construction for high school and for adults. So that people can onboard into Earth and have opportunities for training. Whether that training is in plumbing or electrical work or whatever, we're all working together. AIDT is gonna be there, as well as Central Alabama Community College, they will be there, uh, they are a partner with us. Jacksonville State University, Auburn University, in fact, we're taking a trip, and you're welcome to go, we're taking a trip.
What's the date?
September ninth to Auburn, to look at the, uh, uh, Innovation Center there at Auburn and what they're doing. And, and bring some of that knowledge back, they have been working with us in every single one of these end demand industry clusters. So when you look at your book here and you see. You see. These are the areas where there will be training, R and D, innovation and incubation. And each one of these areas located at Earth. And primarily located at least for the healthcare, hospitality, we'll have culinary arts. Um, we will have, um, modern manufacturing, technology, IT, alternative energy, we've got some folks that are working on that. Uh, transportation, of course, and we've worked very closely, of course, with the city of Sulicaga, but also with Sulicaga City Schools, uh, with regards to transportation. And not only when we're looking at just getting people from point A to point B, but training, heavy equipment training. We're, we're working with Sulicaga City and some of the other school districts and Central Alabama Community College. And we're gonna use Earth as a training ground for, for heavy equipment. Because guess what we're gonna be using?
Heavy equipment.
And that will be the case in every single thing we do.
How, tell me, um, explain this to me, uh, Miss Margaret. So how would it be, say I'm in high school, so how would, how would I sign up for this? Or how would it flow through the school system? Or how would, you know, how would I know to get information about this, you know, say I'm in high school?
Well, that's because it won't be like what we typically would say, okay, so I've got to find out about Earth and what's going on with Earth. Because we work so in tandem with the schools, we're there now. We are doing, uh, uh, all sorts of credentialing and trainings with the schools across our area. So that student will know about that through the work they're doing at the school level.
So who signs them up? Like, um, is this gonna be like a partner with the school?
Partner with the school. And we do that now.
Dr. Osborne, would that flow through Miss Goodwin and workforce development?
Yes.
That workforce development would get with Miss Margaret?
Yes.
Yeah.
And in fact, Russell Scruggs, who couldn't be here tonight, but he, he is our workforce development officer at SAFE. And he works very closely with all the career tech programs in this area. With Miss Goodwin, with Kim Knight, the Talladega County Schools, um, you know, we've done, uh, E and T training. We've done phlebotomy, we've done IT a lot, and we pay those students. If they come to us in after school, we pay them ten dollars an hour for their training.
So this will be something after school, is it okay?
Well, it'll be during school too, because we will have all the spaces. For example, healthcare, the simulation areas, we will have those areas there for Sulicaga students to come, Talladega County students to come. And because we have a special program with the state of Alabama where we have funds to transport, as you know, those individuals who are two hundred and seventy-five percent of poverty, we can bring them in.
So would this, would this be available to everybody or would I have to fall into a certain class to get this or does it matter?
It doesn't matter.
So any, this will be available to every, to everybody. What grades would this start at?
We actually, because we do after school, pre-K, all the way through twelfth grade. We do, we have sixteen after school sites, not counting the high school, across this region.
But would the Earth, but I know we, so would it be the middle school and the high school that Earth would apply? So how would it apply to the, um, elementary students? How would it apply to that?
Because we, because we have those after school programs, no, they're not, they're STEM and project based learning. They're not specific to a career pathway, like what will be when I, we're talking about high schoolers, eleven and twelfth graders, as they're preparing for their future. Adults, and we're working with adults now that are working towards a career pathway. But the early ed students come to us at, at the school level. Like, for example, we have K through eighth grade in Indian Valley, well, by age, by grade. Indian Valley, Pine Crest, Nichols Lawson, and then we work with the high school students separately.
Do y'all also have that, I don't know if you still have that HEBI program as well?
We have HEBI, HEBI will be housed at Earth.
HEBI, so, so will everything from the safe field and move into Earth? So it's gonna, okay, so you would be housed at Earth?
Yes, because that gives you the wraparound services. We also have tenants that are coming in, for example, uh, East Alabama Regional Planning and Development Commission will be in Earth. Uh, rehabilitation services will be at the early ed as well as the adult rehab services, DHR. All of those wraparound services will be located here.
I got another question, so what about like, I know SNC is in the county and you are partnering with the county, would that make our students follow, like, like, they will be second choice?
Well, because we're partnering at the same level as Sulicaga City.
Okay, so it's gonna be the same?
It's come one time.
And we next door to each other.
Well, and, and also I wanna point out that it's technically not in the county. It's a district, it's an industrial district, it's not in the city of Sulicaga, it's not in the county, it has its own governance.
Avondale was that, that portion of Avondale was, was designated back in nineteen eighty-six, I think, as an industrial, um, cluster park.
So what about me as an adult? Say I need it, I don't have a job and I need it to come and see Earth now, so do I?
Miss Margaret, offering you a job.
You can come now, because we have students that come every day from eight-thirty in the morning, adults. From eight-thirty in the morning till three-thirty in the afternoon, and it's our Earn to Learn program. And they are, they are working either in adult ed, because Central Alabama Community College provides all the adult ed programs right there at SAFE. And they will at, at Earth as well.
I wanna point out a couple of things, we're talking about students, I don't think that's really important, but ways this benefits the city of Sulicaga is, this is a workforce training center, so just think about if you're a prospective business looking for an area where we can move to. And you've got a center there that's capable of helping you train and work. Wouldn't you think that would be incentive to come to an area like this? The other thing is, is I don't think anybody would disagree with this. This, the community that would benefit the most from a revitalization of the Avondale mill site is the city of Sulicaga. You have to drive through it to get to our ball field, you have to, it would start in the beginnings too of a redevelopment, hopefully of the, of the mill village. And sort of see this progress and growth kind of grow out of this Earth center. So the, the people who spend the most to gain from a redevelopment standpoint are, is the city of Sulicaga, it's nobody else, it would be you guys.
And my question, I guess, for us on the council, obviously we don't have a million dollars to hand over. Is this something that we'll have to give them bond proceeds or?
Um, that.
That's another.
Yeah, you keep bringing up those bond proceeds, we'd be here all night. Um, I don't know, I think it's just something we would, we would have to, um, consider how we would help. Because I mean, like Ashen said, I don't think we would have a million dollars in a year, it may be to where we just give so much money up to so many years. I mean, I don't.
Well, the issue is that what we're requesting is construction money. And the reason for that is that we have, we have a consultant that is working with us on what they call new market tax credits. And new market tax credits allows you to, um, to bring in dollars based on the percentage of your capital stack that you've had, have, uh, leveraged. So right now, we are about five to six million dollars away from the capital stack that we need to be able to generate thirty million dollars in new market tax credits now. Thirty million doesn't go toward this project. We get about six million, which would complete the project. And we have to have that in place or committed and spent within two years of probably, what, November?
Yes.
Yeah.
November of, um.
Well, the clock, the clock will start, the clock will start in November, yeah.
Oh, it'll start somewhere from November.
We've raised today about twenty-nine million dollars. We have that money. So when we come and ask for a commitment from the city of Sulicaga, we have raised. We have, we're also getting ready to announce, um, a, a huge investment that's coming, um, of, of a business that's gonna be operated at Earth. And we're gonna make that announcement. It will be a, a regenerative ag, uh, it's called Shipshape Urban Farms, and they are an innovation depot. And they will be living at Earth and they will be bringing jobs, plus their, their projected revenue annually is over five million dollars.
I got another question, and you may have said this. So, so with partnering with the schools, whether it's ours, we become or whoever else, so will these kids be able to, you know, do these training and graduate and be ready to go to work? Like, are you guys gonna help them find jobs as well too?
Oh, yes, we do that.
They'll be certified in something when they leave.
They will, and not only that, they will have opportunities if they wanna advance their education, so they wanna go on to two year or four years. They will have those pathways because we have those relationships. And that's our role, is to get these students and also to keep them here. Because there are plenty of programs, we can send kids to Birmingham, craft training programs. But guess what, they stay there. We want them to be in our community and to stay here.
Uh, one more thing we haven't talked about is, obviously this is a huge budget, a huge project for this area. And this, this group is committed, the Earth Board is committed to keeping as many dollars as locally as possible. They've already hired a contractor. That contractor is a large, larger GC just in Birmingham, but he partnered with a local general contractor to help make the connection between our local submarket. So a lot of this money that's been, uh, that, that we've received is going to directly impact this area. Purchase of materials, we're putting it on the contractor. He has to purchase as local as possible, which could mean up to a billion dollars in just tax revenue on the construction materials, right, to this area, so.
And because we don't have to bid this out because of where the money is, has been leveraged, then we can, you know, we can make sure that, that we locally, that our local economy benefits from just the buildup.
And you can hold the contractor speaks to fire, you don't have to publicly bid your word, right? You can tell them, this is the way it's gonna be and you're not gonna be contracted.
Must be nice.
Yeah, it's very nice, yes.
Wow. I'm excited, thank you guys so much for that information.
And I also have some other, these are just some concept on the, I mentioned the, um, what, what, uh, Shipshape Urban Farms, they're vertical farms. I want you to see this, this is a tremendous, um, opportunity. the Vertical Farms, I want you to see this, this is a tremendous, um, opportunity to come to our community. And so I'm gonna let you look at some of the concepts.
I know, is there any way y'all can get this done before my kid graduate, I got another one graduating next year?
For next year?
No, poor man, poor man.
So with me, with me being a thirty-four-year-old, having my own business that involves heavy machinery, and I wanted to go purchase another piece of machinery, but I needed some training on it first, before I went and purchased, make sure I knew how to operate, knew what I was doing, could I come and?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Has anybody told you they loved you today?
Hey, one of the most interesting things I've heard is like farmers talk about the need for a farmhand, really not knowing how to operate a tractor.
Right.
Not many kids are growing up doing that on farms these days. So just getting basic fundamentals of how to operate a farm tractor is something that will hopefully potential.
Has somebody worked it, because you need to provide them a little training? I can't wait, you're a tractor!
Even having somebody, for example, like, if I'm in Embaris, that's not your typical heavy equipment.
That's right.
That's not a kid's deal.
That's right.
That is your, and, and you have to have specific training, and we honestly, this project has brought so much interest and willingness to partner with us, reaching out to us to say, what can we do to, um, to be a part of this? Including trainings and things of that nature, so it is, it's very exciting.
I forgot to ask, what are you guys thinking, um, construction completion, what does that look like?
About eighteen months, we're hoping after construction.
That'll be the Eva James days.
Yeah, just the Eva James.
And, and the development of the, uh, part of the Aces.
So like twenty-six?
Early Learning Center.
Yeah, I would hope that we'll be in the Eva James space eighteen months after it starts.
And then just build the rest of it up around it.
Yeah, we got other pieces of the project that are kind of on a different track because the funding is coming from different places. But the Eva James space is.
We're, we're moving.
You'll see contractors out there in the next month.
And your, your, your investment of a million dollars will range six million in return. I heard Elise say earlier about, you know, money, uh, getting more money for, for free, basically, or that would, that brings another six million to this project.
I'm excited, I know we have a lot of exciting things going on and coming to the city, um, in the near future, and I have to say, this, this is one of them.
Did you see?
I did, I sent it in my, I thought I sent it in my book.
Wonderful, just beautiful, just beautiful.
This is a living wall.
Wow.
And that's the, that's the side of Eva James.
Uh-uh, I don't, but earth is about three, four hundred yards from being a distance three, I just want everybody to know that that's how close.
After, after we do the redistance, I can't even see it.
But it can see the rock, it can see the Sulicaca.
Thank you so much, I'm excited, so, um, we're gonna take, um, you guys' proposal into consideration, and again, everybody will have.
This is a one-time ask. One-time ask.
And we got through before, um, as it happens, look at us.
You know we got that on paper. You know I love, I've known you my whole life. Paul, save that segment.
One-time ask.
Thank you, Ms. Margaret, thank you guys.
I love her.
Alright, so next we got the Lake Howard Authority?
Yes, per the agreement that we have with them that was entered until July eighteenth, twenty-seventeen, would still like the fifty thousand.
Alright, so we can just, so then it's the Marvel Festival, this is pretty much the same like a Lake Howard, right?
Yes, ma'am, five thousand dollar request, same as every year.
Okay, and then the, let's, let's take a, um, let's take a, um, fifteen-minute break. I'm sorry, five?
Five, yeah, we got, we got.
Beautification Council, it's about thirty. She's got a historical meeting.
So we're not having it tonight, so. Hold on, hold on, hold on. No, I want to be, I want to be, um, I want to be, because Steve's already been waiting, so we're gonna do the, um, senior center person, that's okay. Because Steve's already been waiting, and we made Steve stay the whole time.
We showed him.
Steve?
I'm just, I'm just being curious at this point.
Well, no, I mean, we don't want to, you're up.
I want to know I had a slide.
For the senior center? Is this, um, is this?
I don't even, do I have a?
So is this what we always give to the, um, senior center, and what does this go for, um, Steve?
This is the nutrition wheels and wheels program. We run the program, y'all just reimburse us what it costs.
Have we picked up any new work?
So there is a set amount of meals that we can have, it's like a hundred and ten, seventy-five of those go out. And we have a small waiting list, but it changes very quickly.
So this is just pretty much it is what it is, right? This is what we always give?
Right, that's what we, well, we get the money, we reimburse it, um, and then Talladega County's gonna give us the twenty thousand each year.
So we're technically just spending, what, fifteen thousand, one hundred dollars?
No, that doesn't include the counties.
Oh.
But we are spending around.
Fifty-five thousand, one hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, well, that's good.
It was, it was real close this year, but Steve ran his numbers, we ran ours. Um, and I think we're gonna have a little surplus, but it's insignificant, to be honest with you.
Oh, wow.
But we do watch this with Steve, um, and we do communicate regularly.
I will say I do appreciate this, um, these past couple of budget, um, sessions, because we've been learning a lot of information that we didn't know, so it's, it's been very enlightening, so thank you, Alex, and your team, and everybody else.
Very good on this one.
So we can go back to the, um, let me see, this last one was on here.
Beautification?
Yeah, we can go back to the beautification council, but what was the, yeah, we already did tell the council. So Tara, we have to pass the mic to Tara.
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 Same.
So we asked for five thousand extra dollars beyond our normal twenty-five hundred that we get. We're gonna use the twenty-five hundred for the usual work that we do with monthly cleanups and work on garden spaces and cleaning up the marble monuments in town. We're also looking to do some work on the grid spaces on Broadway with the twenty-five hundred. But the five thousand is for more of the commercial Christmas decorations. So, and we, we had such a great response last year, we were able to get the tree, get the debris involved with the live tree property. And all of that, um, the, the commercial Christmas decorations, they will outlast us, everybody grandchildren, they will be around forever and staying in shape. We have our storage units that I discussed with the city council meeting, we've got an insured, um, we've got a pile that's locked up tight in there, so it's got a safe place to be stored, and we can take care of all the city's decorations. But we're hoping to add to that, and so the, the five thousand dollars that we requested, we won't be able to use this year, because the commercial decorations, they have to be ordered early in the year, like, through summer, that's when we have to order those to get them. But we do have a little bit of money left over, and we'll see if we get some donations from, you know, just private citizens. And we're going to add to the tensile trail, um, that was such a huge success last year, a lot of people said they wanted to do it. Dominique and Jennifer Callis did a great job getting all that set up, and we are going to extend it this year. So we've got to put some money toward getting the electrical set up for that. We also have some money where we can get some more of those lighted deer to go around town. And we are looking into the, um, to replace the garland at the Lysol right out front of City Hall too, because that was really, um, an old garland there, we actually got rid of it, so we're going to replace that with a commercial that'll match the tree. And we are hoping to get all of that done for this year, but the five thousand that we're requesting will be for Christmas twenty-twenty-five. And so we'll be able to start looking at what we need to get with that money, and start raising more clients. Because this is a, this is a project over several years, basically, to get the decorations updated.
It's worth, I'm sorry. Oh, we still go continue the pressure washing also?
Yes, yes.
As they, because that was a big hit with our merchants on Norton and Broadway, they, they enjoyed.
But we'll keep a close watch on that, and we appreciate everything the city did to help us get that done.
That was wonderful, I mean, that was absolutely.
And we got such a great response for that, it looks so much better, and we're gonna continue to watch that and work on that. We're gonna continue cleaning up at the Sulicaca Cemetery, since we have that historic cemetery, and also Historic Commission. We're gonna cross strings here and work on that too, and, um, just kind of keep our eye on a lot of the things going on down there.
I'd like to ask another question, the gray murals going down Broadway, and I think me and you have talked about it, some of them are getting a little out of hand, and they're running into the onings of some of our businesses. Have we thought about pulling some of those up, or trimming them, or what's our plan for that?
There's a lot of mixed reviews on what should happen there. I've heard that some downtown merchants don't like it, I have nothing in my patch in front of my office, so here's the beautification council with the dirt patch in front of our office, so that's probably not good.
So they do like the mess.
They do, and a lot of the merchants, um, don't enjoy that.
Were they properly pruned back during the off-season, or is that, if they weren't, that's probably why there's a lot of problems, that's wrong.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think they were.
I think it's just simply it's pruned back when it's time.
And I don't know who's in charge of that, but some of them are leaning towards onings and toward the building. So we had discussed at the last beautification council meeting to potentially go through and maybe leave some of them and plant something else in the other spaces, or, uh, there, strangely, a lot of people hate gray murals, I like gray murals.
I cut every one of mine, man.
Yeah, but, but.
We poured them all up, it was good.
There's a lot of voting to, in our, within the organization, to see if we can take them all out, so that's, um...
But my, my thing is, if they stay or the ones that do stay, they need to be cut back every year anyway, so that was all.
And we know that there are rules, Shannon, Steve's like, that's all rules.
They wound up getting the wrong species.
Yeah.
But whatever you do on Broadway, we have to check the bell box, because there's something to put in there that could destroy.
But what about pulling that?
But we're not gonna do anything big.
Yes, sir, I'm sure whatever you decide, it'll be great and wonderful, and then look fantastic.
And we'll make sure all the downtown merchants know before we do anything, we'll make sure you guys know before we do anything.
Earth.
Um, we've, we've got some plans where we don't have anything solidified, haven't voted, and I do have an email that Shannon Masters had, that has all the information about what you can and cannot plant on the state highway, so we have that. And then, um, we'll, we'll go from there, and that's our next big project that we want to tackle.
I know y'all have dealings with it since, uh, with the flower pots and stuff, so our, our man that waters them every day, he's doing a technical job, I see him out there twice a day, just about early mornings, late at night.
The, the watering, the ones on Broadway, that's, that's, that's our pressure washing, that's Steve calling them.
I see him contracted with him.
He's good with water.
Yeah, but he's, I mean, he doesn't miss it, he's out there.
Yeah, but he's taking great care of them, and we have thought about even looking at getting some big pots to go into those areas, if we can have large pots on twenty-one, but that would be, we're thinking that would be hard to keep anything alive in big decorative pots on there, so we've got a lot of ideas swimming around, and we want to try to get that project done this year, so we're, we're thinking about it, and everybody, I was there, they, they're going to be everybody.
I'm not afraid, I'm just playing, whatever y'all want to do with the merchants, we'll totally be fine.
Okay.
I don't have to bring them to the market. This is me ruining my life.
I do have a question, Tara, so the five thousand dollars for the Christmas decorations, is this something you're gonna ask for annually, or is it gonna get to where in two years, we don't need any decorations, so we don't need five thousand dollars, or?
A lot of it depends on any kind of donations we get, because quite frankly, we had a huge, I mean, beautification council had some money to put toward the tree, and we had a lot of the, the local businesses that were very generous contributing. And we don't want to go back to those same people again this year, but I'm thinking that there's still people out there that want to, to donate toward it. So, you know, whatever we can get donation-wise from, from businesses, again, from just to private citizens, we'll do that. And, um, we hope to get, I mean, again, it's a, a years, we're looking, maybe a five-year project, because it's, it's a lot to kind of replace all of the, the decorations for town, and, you know, it, we most likely will be back again asking, but, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to try to get as many donations as possible.
And this is on a reimbursed?
This, this is on a reimbursed basis with everything else that Ms. Douglas does. Um, I know she also helped, uh, the beautification council helped clean up the outside of City Hall for us, um, with her contacts. We really did appreciate that, and she helped get the, uh, the sign outside fixed and figured out what was wrong with it, so.
She would work you up a no.
She does work you up a no.
Things like selling t-shirts around Christmas for different events.
I know, what was that thing last, um, Christmas you had, it was, um, what was it? It was like the, um, it was like the, um, loving care yards but for Christmas, what was it?
It had the, um, the Christmas decor of the week, so we're gonna do that again. Uh, we just had a, a good idea, or one of our beautification council members, she texted me today, Rosa Clutz. She was saying that it would be nice if a lot of people decorated so nicely last year and wanted to decorate this year, if they want to be a part of like a little map of Sulicaca, where you can drive around and see all these decorations, that we could put some kind of interactive map on Facebook, or put it out somewhere where people could drive through town. So not only be the decorations that we're asking, the commercial decorations for the city, but people coming into town to see these decorations. They could also drive through some of the neighborhoods and see some of the participating homes, I thought that was a great idea.
It is, because I remember you and I, on the last meeting I was at, we talked about doing something, we call it the Christmas car.
And, and it was a, it was a very, uh, variation of what you, what you thought would be a good idea in there, because we, we tried to set it up where it looked like a Christmas garden, we're showing on people's yards on, on Facebook.
You guys did a really, really good job, I'm excited, I feel already, um, I feel like I'm, I'm gonna put a Christmas tree up there.
And, and we're excited that we got, and we're together with the Christmas, it's more than just beautification council on Christmas level. We got people that are just a part of the community that want to be a part of it, we've got our organization, Garden Bugs, the Parks and Rec represented, the Chamber of Commerce represented on there, and, and so we have just a, a, a good group of people that want to come together, and the beautification council just has this, the arm of that group that will purchase and will maintain and will protect all the decorations for the city, and so that's why I'm here asking, but, you know, it's more than just me asking, because we got a wonderful group that's putting everything together.
Well, that was good, I'm excited, you guys have been working up.
Ms. Nix, I just wanted to let you know, she did, um, submit the insurance as requested.
They, they insure the decorations as well, too, that's why I was thinking it was better to blow it for them, that they take care of it.
I think you're right on.
And while we're talking about it, if there's any point that y'all think of, of, of city property where we could put that, um, that shipping container, it'd be nice to keep it on city property, right now, some are all, yeah, McDonald's family at Bowden Properties, they are allowing us to have it next to the storage facilities they have, but since it is city decoration, I would like for it to be somewhere that.
I want for you to wear it to shop, though.
And I talked to him, he didn't, he didn't seem, he didn't think he had a space, but, um, it, I mean, it's not critical right now, but I would just, I would just like to get it.
Hey, school system, we might put it over at Avondale.
So, and if we could think of someplace that's more.
I know we've got, we've got all kinds of room over there, right, Pauls?
Well, maybe we'll just get some of these people in this room, and since everybody, everybody wants to help now, so we can just, maybe I'll get a dinner space.
That'd be great, because we're going to need to get another shipping container, because this one we have is built, like, we could barely get the doors shut.
Wow, that's a good problem, that is a good problem.
We could put that on that back fence.
Yeah, so.
That might actually be comfortable, to help keep.
The dogs away.
Yeah.
That could be my next path, that I wear feral dogs and I'm gonna go mail them, but we'll get, um, yeah, we would, if we could think of something that'd be easiest to get that shipping container moved, once we pull the tree and have everything decorated, then we could have, um, Heritage come in and move it for us and put it a different.
Me and him will work on some stuff, more of us will keep, we can.
Sounds like we have a plan, thank you so much, Tara.
Before we leave, Tara, let me ask you one quick question, because the tensile trail, we're hoping it was forty-five trees last year, we're estimating that it may be eighty, that's the reason we're extending on the left two. Um, but we're gonna, the night of the event, the tree lighting, we're gonna have, you know, a lot of activities over at Blue Bay, front of Blue Bell, Central Park, and we're gonna take everybody and kind of lead them, back up the path towards the main road out here, and they come over here for the tree lighting. So it's gonna be a big event, we were talking about trimming trees, the magnolia, that's the very end one. Is it okay for us to trim that, so that when people are walking through there for this event, and you want to tense it, the, the last magnolia?
Way too close to the sidewalk.
Well, you kind of get jumped under to get onto.
I'd go with everyone.
On the main sidewalk.
This is a few limbs to trim, probably where people, where we're gonna do this event when they're going, because the tensile trail will run, like it did last year, we're trying to keep it on the sidewalk, so you don't get dirty body walking through the trees, but it will go to the end to where that magnolia is, so maybe we can trim those other trees too, the gray part of them?
I'd recommend pulling it up, but I, I don't see a problem.
And my, this is something we'll do, my husband will do, we'll get out there, y'all, before Christmas, and get it, just trim it back a little bit, so people are having that.
Earth.
Okay, so, yeah, thank you.
So who do we, but Tara had two.
Yes, ma'am, feral dogs.
Did I say federal?
You just get a mind.
I got federal government on my mind.
Feral dogs are better.
So, since this is the first time that we've asked for any money, do, are, are y'all aware of what all feral dogs does?
I'm aware they're a big help to our shelter.
And that, we became a five oh one C three in two thousand seventeen, and we're all volunteer organization, and it's, we, we're there to try to help reduce the strain of feral dogs.
Can I ask one quick question, this is out of pure ignorance, I guess? Why, instead of doing this, why not join or help the shelter wholeheartedly, get your donations and all that? We have to hand through the shelter, just to be curious.
So we do a lot of that, and historically, what we've done is, and I've only been there too, I'm saying we, they've been around a lot longer than I've been, and I've done, and set all the groundwork with this, but we, we help the shelter each week. So the feral dogs, volunteers are the ones that are out there, walking dogs are the ones that are out there, also taking pictures of dogs, posting on. So the feral dogs, volunteers are the ones that are out there, walking dogs are the ones that are out there, also taking pictures of dogs, posting on Facebook, marketing, trying to get some adopted. We also raise money and funds for any kind of vet bills that have to happen when there are emergency or, or there are problems for a dog. We think they're very adoptable, nice dog, but they have something, you know, some kind of serious thing happened when they're brought in, if they're injured, we'll pay for the vet bills, we provide transport for those dogs. So, so we're there to support the shelter, they need different things, they let us know, and then we see if we can raise money to do that. That's above and beyond what the city can do for the shelter. And so, you know, we, we support that, but this spay and neuter idea, it's not, I mean, we, we sell spay and neuter vouchers. So instead of us trying to fix the problem after the fact, I mean, when those dogs are there at the shelter, we're too late to fix the reason why they're there, we're hoping to sell spay and neuter vouchers and really get the community into it. Since two thousand seventeen, they've sold six thousand one hundred and forty-five vouchers, and we're still in this situation with dogs and cats roaming the streets like they are. But, um, we sell the, the vouchers low cost, and so people are able to get their, pay thirty dollars when we do the low-cost spay and neuter vouchers.
So is that what this six thousand dollars is for? Break, break that down, what's this six thousand for?
The six thousand dollars will help us purchase those, because we have to pay, these spay and neuter vouchers are for Alabama Spay and Neuter in Irondale. They, they have low-cost vouchers all the time, but their low cost is anywhere from forty-one dollars for a male cat to seventy-one dollars for a female dog. So we have to pay that full price for them, even if we sell them for thirty dollars. But our, the idea is that if we can have it to where it's more doable for people, then they'll be willing to get their animals fixed, because.
And that may cut down on stray, you think?
Well.
New population.
It, it should help, but the problem is, is that it's going to take more than just that, I mean, this is the part of it that we can help with. But, you know, again, think about how long the feral dogs have been around and how many vouchers they've sold, and we still have these dogs and cats around like this. And we've also sent almost ten thousand dogs from Silicon Valley to other states to be adopted.
Yeah.
So we've worked, I mean, that's a big number.
Well, I was in those programs to, to support the population.
Yeah, and so we, so we have, um, a lot of rescues in the Northeast in particular that have taken dogs from us. But now, since twenty twenty, a lot of people adopted dogs and then decided they didn't want them, so they went back to their normal lives. And so I think shelters around the country are suffering and getting full, so, you know, I've got some numbers here, like in, uh, we were sending almost about sixteen hundred dogs to shelters in other, or rescues in other states in, like, two thousand nineteen, twenty, two thousand eighteen, but this year, we've only been able to send two hundred and sixty-four. Because they're, they're most, we only have two rescues in Florida that take puppies. And so we have fosters that will foster these puppies that either people dump at people's homes, you know, people come to the shelter, the shelter's full, they're doing the best they can, and then they got puppies that the shelter can't take, so that's when they call us and ask feral dogs, can you take these puppies? And so we find fosters for them when we can, and then we've got two rescues in Florida that take puppies from us regularly. I've got six at my house right now that I am counting down the hours that leave Wednesday morning at four, four, five AM. And I told them I'd drive them down there, so they couldn't come get them. I mean, so, you know, we love the puppies, but we got to get them out of here, I mean, if we're not there, if the feral dogs group is not there, then these puppies get dumped, some of them survive, and then they have new puppies, and it's just a disaster. And so, um, we're just doing the best we can from what we have access to. So the six thousand dollars would be to, for us to buy those spay and neuter vouchers, breaking it down at Alabama Spay and Neuter, bringing them here, and we have sales of Petsense, Petsense allows us to come in and have these large sales, where we can have hundreds of people lined up outside coming in to buy these thirty-dollar vouchers. Alabama Spay and Neuter has a, a, a van that comes down here to Home Depot parking lot, picks up dogs from here, so if we have people that live here that can't make it to Irondale, the transport will take them up there and then bring their animals back to them. So, you know, that respect has been very successful with all these that we've sold, but it's, um, there's still more that needs to be done that, I know that I've heard, heard all of you talking about that, so hopefully this council will be a council that starts addressing that.
So the money that you, um, use to sell it, what are you going to just put it back into the program or just buy more, um?
So we, we have some money coming from the county commissioners right now. Prior to this year, when the county commissioners started giving you sixty-five hundred dollars a quarter, it was all purely donation-based, that we would go buy these vouchers, and then the, the thirty dollars that would come to us would just take portion of the voucher. And so we're not making money off of this.
I know, I understand, like, but when you need the, the thirty dollars, like half of the reimbursement, can you just go buy more vouchers?
That would just put it, I mean, we just use it to pay for, um, the portion that we, that we had to use to purchase those vouchers. And there, and we have the vouchers available year-round and month cuts, and so people can go get the, the forty-one dollar to seventy-one dollar voucher all year round. So we sell those all the time, but you'd be surprised how many people are lined up all the way down to TJ Maxx and Publix, trying to get in there and get vouchers, and we have the thirty-dollar sales.
What about, um, what about, like, food, like, say with you, you have, you're housing six dogs, like, do you have to buy food for the people who are fostering the dogs?
The, the feral, the feral dogs organization will pay, so that, so that we can have more successful fosters, so that people just know if they have space, that they have the ability to take care of the dogs, we're here at a time that feral dogs provides all of the shots, feral dogs provide all of the supplies. If we have to do any kind of vet bills, they, they pay without, and they take all the food as well, so, yeah, we just, it's.
I, when I was out of the shelter, I ran into a gym next to you, they're part of feral dogs. I'm glad that, uh, we can get together there and get them to come here to the table, maybe we can, maybe we can find it to give you guys some assistance, but I know what you guys do, and I'm very thankful that y'all help out our shelter and what you do for our community.
Well, we, we, and we do it again, and as best we can.
I know it gets tiresome, and then without, and limited funds, because I know y'all come out of pocket a lot to make things happen.
And, and I'm new to it, I'm still fresh enough to where I'm not frustrated with the situation. A lot, a lot of the others have been around for a long time, and they are getting, um, it, it is tiresome, and it's, um, sad to see that as hard as they've worked with almost ten thousand dogs, we've been here, six thousand vouchers, that we still have the issue that we have, so it's, um, it's, it's, it's something that all of us are going to have to figure out and work on together.
Do we think we have a lot of neighbors taking advantage of us because we're so generous in being able to help with this?
You mean a lot of the neighboring, um, communities and county? Yeah, I mean, I think there are probably dogs that are dumped in town and probably, I mean, I, I would imagine that that's exactly what's happening. And when we do the spay and neuter voucher sales, we do allow, you know, anybody from the, from the county to come in, because they, a lot of those dogs do end up in Silicon Valley.
And there was a shelter in Crusoe County, but that didn't, that.
It didn't last long at all, I, I think they thought that, that they could get it going, and it would take a while before they got full, and they were full within two weeks.
But the characters out there, yeah, yeah, that's how they can see us.
I mean, there's plenty of dogs being dropped off over in my district all the time, in all those neighborhoods, I mean, that, that's, that's how I got my pets growing up. We just kept one or two all the time, but, you know, I see it monthly, just about where somebody's dropped them off, there's common spots, and areas where they do.
And, and even if you're not an animal lover, just from the, the health of, of our city, it doesn't look good to have stray and feral dogs running around town. When you try to go shopping, have five or six in the parking lot or something, so, you know, that's where it's going to take a lot, and I know the animal control officer's doing a, a great job. I was talking to him the other day, and he's got about incredibly dogs he's gotten in the past two months, and so he's working hard to try to help that situation and get some of these dogs off the street.
I appreciate it, I think that's what he wants.
We, I was at our office today, and obviously the fourth dealership's in front of us, and there were nine dogs laying under cars that we're trying to sell to them. Eventually, you know, they're going to get frustrated and say, you know, and the problem with those dogs, and those are, those are our true feral dogs. I mean, our name is Feral Dogs of Avenue, we're, somebody asked me if, if we were pro feral dogs, I'm like, no, we don't want any feral strays in Silicon Valley at all.
Just change the name to Feral Dogs of Avenue.
I don't mean, I, I don't like to mess with animal people or feral dogs, I have my own thoughts, so keep them to myself.
But, but all of our thoughts are the same, to get them off the street.
So those are Alex's.
They don't really cross the, James, wait, stay on the.
Thank you guys so much, I think that's all your hats, isn't it?
I think so, I hope so, I can, I can put on those if you need it, I appreciate it, no, thanks for that.
Thank you, thank you for everything you do.
Well, nobody showed up for the IDB, I mean, you can say it to that one if you would like.
I can try, I've got a mind.
I'm not rushing you.
I am not rushing you, you don't yell at me.
You don't.
Okay, so Palmer Place, Palmer Place, they briefed on August sixth, they just want another ten thousand dollars. If you need or have any questions around there, we usually have a queue to answer.
We don't, Alex, we can go to the next one, y'all have made a lot of this budget, um, turn up to that.
I said I'm working. No, I don't know about.
Safe did not request any additional funds to share.
Sorry, Jesus.
So they didn't request anything?
No.
Like zero dollars?
Other than the million, no.
The million is separate, the million is not the same.
It's not safe.
No, I'm just saying, but do we usually, don't we usually give Safe an allocation or nothing?
We normally do, um, we didn't give maybe, last year, um, we did give them. We give them ninety thousand fifteen dollars, but that's for the fifty-three old program.
That's what it is, transportation.
Right, that you guys already approved, that's why.
But I remember not seeing this before to come the last.
Okay.
Okay, I'm good. Sounds good.
My mind, but.
So Talladega County Cities, we don't have a choice but to fund this, um.
contractual obligation?
Yes, with the county, it's based off population, if it goes up, we're still obligated to pay it, no rhyme or reason, it's based off population. It's not based off kids, it's based off total population. Talladega County Health Department, um, same amount, eighteen thousand contracts.
And?
Tom?
No breach. I'll be brief. No, I first want to pass on Dr. Eller's appreciation for everything that the city does for the school system, unfortunately, she's not able to be here. So I'm honored to share a few thoughts with you all today. We're asking for, for level funding, and it really comes down to our enrollment's down, our number of units, funding is down, loss of federal funding. So we're trying to do what we can on our side by assuming and combining roles and positions, especially administratively, so that we don't lose that focus in the classroom, uh, but we're also aggressively seeking grants and other opportunities for funding. As you know, it, it takes a little bit to run the school system, I mean, we're looking at twenty-five-plus million-dollar budgets, and Alabama's a little bit different in the fact that, uh, cities contribute not only tax-based, but also allocations, right, or appropriations. It's a little bit different from what I'm used to, so the value of the partnership, um, exceeds nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars, in my opinion. And, uh, that's why I feel it's important that, that we're always on the same page, that we work together in everything that we can. We don't want to just be a recipient of the, we want to be a partner, right? And especially i- i- it's important with us, with school safety, and, and what we do with Chief Johnson, Chief Muse, um, looking at the SRO, right? Looking at, at the drug dog, we're looking at, um, all, all the continued support, the crossing guards, all those things are, are important to us, but it's more than just the body or the dollars, it's the partnership and the value of what our students see in what our city does for us. Um, and, and it's, again, it's different from where I was at before, and the value of, of the partnership grows and exceeds anything that we can do. So we have to be mindful that we're looking at, at security and facility improvements, transportation, utilities, fuel, supply chain issue. You know, we can talk about all those things, but, um, it, it's the value of the relationship that's just as much. So on the security side, we're looking at, talking about metal detectors, we're talking about exterior door alarms, so if someone leaves a door open, it's constantly going off, so that, until we shut it, to make sure that we know that that door is open, so that any insecure opportunity, no one has an opportunity to pass through the threshold, right? We're also looking at, at door locks and, and making sure, every once in a while, when you have a number of doors in a building or in a, in a facility or in a community, keys start to get a little bit excessive, right? We didn't collect them all, somebody's got an, a spare, so every once in a while, it's important that you take another look, that's how you're securing those. Absolutely, so, you know, things like that, video cameras, um, what we're trying to do out at the transportation facilities is a lot because of earth, right? We were focused on trying to purchase that property to help be in concert with earth and make that property viable for us, because our students now have that career pathway requirement that they have to establish in school before they graduate. But now, we're able to hopefully put some of that together with earth, but at our facility, the skid steer train, forklift train, things of that nature out at, at our facility, and, and one of the reasons we spent a little money trying to make it a little bit, a little bit nicer is because that property of earth is going to be phenomenal.
Well, aren't you guys going to be able to create a partnership to where you can have it in both places, or is Safe going to, not Safe, Earth is going to be like, we can't kill you because we have to only operate here?
Right, no, so what we've done, and strategically, Dr. Eller's on their boards strategically, uh, for us to be a partner, for us to be able to take care of some of those other things, the skid steer train, the forklift train, they're doing the equipment operator. So tho- all, those tend to often fall into that same industry bucket or that career pathway, some of it's at our place, some of it's at their place. We'll be able to offer that for other students. Our goal for that facility is really to become a workforce development center, transportation operations, workforce development center, whatever terminology you want to use, we're going to have house transportation out there, our operations and maintenance, and then also this additional training. We applied for some grants and, and came up short on a couple of them, but our time's going to come where we can redo some of that to have manufacturing set up, to be able to train and get students ready for opportunities that exist in some of the manufacturers around the areas.
Tom, I do have one for some of the actions rushing me, what have you guys been able to do from April to now? Because I know when you guys asked for that additional allocation, you had a list of things that you wanted to do, so what are that list of things that you wanted to do? And I know some of it was, um, security, what have you been able to do with those few months?
Sure, absolutely, the, the biggest thing we did, we got the metal detectors, right, we got those operationally, we got them at, at all the sporting events to clear back policy. A lot of that has gone into facility-type things, uh, things that pop up that we're not ready for, things that the adware dollars don't cover. Uh, I mean, we did the high school group for a million dollars, we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollar boiler, uh, we had a two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollar chiller at the high school, I mean, those things just start adding up, and if we're, and we had some opportunities prior, prior years to do some things, and we just didn't get them done, um, for whatever reason, right? I wasn't here to speak to it, uh, all I can focus on is making sure that our buildings are safe and secure and provide a healthy learning environment for our students, that's our number one priority.
What about the AC in the, um, in the gym, in the main gym?
Wait till you get the, have you been?
I have not.
Bring a jet.
Basketball.
Bring a jet.
Bring a jet, and remember, every fall, it was just powder and blazes in there?
I need, I need a jacket.
Bring a jet.
Say, what do you want to tell us your gym floor?
The gym floor, right now, we're tempering, right? It, it's going to need a long-term solution, we've Band-Aid it for now, um, as economically and efficiently as we can. Um, it's going to need replacing the floor, we're looking at probably four hundred thousand dollars, right, facility. I have got a, a roof over at Indian Valley that's leaking in the technology room and in the library and a couple of other spots, it's got a tarp on the roof. Um, that quickly has escalated to the top of the priority list, similarly, similarly to the, the boiler going out of the high school, the roof leaking like a sieve, right? Those things weren't, when I first got here, those things weren't on the list, how quickly those things advance and, and then become, okay, now we've got to relook at everything budget-wise, because we have to do these things, right?
And Laura's got a question, too, but I have one more, I'm sorry, Laura, the plumbing, we had some issues with the plumbing as well at the high school. Has that been taken care of, is there some drainage, I don't know if it was plumbing or drainage?
Both, it's been both, um, and we've hired a plumber to be on our staff, that's going to help reduce our costs, and we're not contracting it out, and we have resolved some of those issues, some of them still exist, but we're, when we inspect them, it's going to take more dollars to fix some of those things, so we've actually taken some commodes and such out, out of bathrooms, because it's not feasible for us to keep, keep trying to do it, and it's not going to, it's not doing it.
It's just, I'm going to be in a concession stand for those few months, I just want to know what, I just.
What you're working with? Um, we had to replace an ice, I mean, I mean, so it gets down to little things, we had to replace an ice machine, uh, all those things, you feel like nickel and dime, right? But when you're not, when things have gotten so old, it gets to a point where it just, when it rains, it pours, literally.
There was also a plan to reset in the nineteen twenties, the nineteen forties, where it was back to place, but have you, have you stopped that so you can use that money for other things?
We, we've reshuffled priorities, a- and that's on, almost on the daily, depending on what pops up, like this gym floor, I would have never expected it was going to be. And, and that's, so we still have Legion Stadium turf that's on our long-term plan, that should have been probably replaced this year or next. Trying to figure out how we get that done, in addition to a new gym floor, a new group of, and bound all those things.
What about the baseball field, baseball facility, that it doesn't have air conditioning, it needs, um, carpeting in there, there's also some issues with the mound and all the, what would the plan for that?
Right, so a, a lot of those type things, we really rely on the sports to help raise some funds, right? That's the primary goal. We have to make sure that every dollar spent has the greatest impact it can on a number of students. For us to pitch and hole into one is, is, it's on the list.
Right, I think it's the turf, but the.
Yeah, it's not as high on the list.
I will, if I may, boss. That, that turf was Lord, um, when that was sealed, they took, uh, that turf that's in the cage, it was old, uh, turf, well not old turf, it was extra turf that was left over when they done the baseball field. We took it from the football field and we took it over there to put, uh.
Yeah, recite what it.
Yes, we, we recited, we took it to put it in there to be of use, because they built it with a, it was just a concrete slav and we had rubber mats like you can see in the weight rooms and we just staggered them out so when you hit balls, it wouldn't, it wouldn't hit the concrete and hit you or hit the concrete and damage the ball. We makeshift, we makeshift did a lot of different things to, to put in there. Now, the air conditioner, I don't think in the cage it was, we ever had air conditioner, uh, in there. I think maybe a little bit, but I don't, I, I don't remember.
There is, there's no.
Is the locker room out too?
I don't know about the locker room, I haven't been in the.
You just know about the cage itself.
It, it's in, it's mine, like, and right now they're starting business, starting workouts and I mean, it's a hundred degrees and a ten building and.
We used to just raise up the roll-up doors and get those big fans.
Is there anyone in there? I didn't think there was one.
I don't think there is.
It sucks, I don't know, I just know that it's hot right now. It sucks having parents on the counter.
No.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 it makes us better, right, it makes us better. We need to identify every opportunity, so then we can evaluate how we can make an impact.
Yeah, but it's like a T ten in there right now, those boys are starting workouts and then.
And I can tell you, we are right now, um, someone mentioned our twenty-two units earlier. We've got a ton of them that we're trying to, as they come up, because the, the replacement on those is, is drastic, we're trying to get rid of those, become more efficient, right? Uh, and, and so we have, we're, we're in the process right now of trying to create a long-term plan so that every mechanical, we know the lifespan and we're replacing it when it should be replaced, not waiting and then trying to throw money at it every time for ten years where it doesn't work at all.
So you're using your model, you're learning to be proactive, so you're not being reactive.
Without a doubt, without a doubt, we can't, we can't afford to be, and, and so much so, Miss Nick, that we're looking at, at the flooring, right? So at some of our elementary schools and at the high school, we're replacing classrooms with LVT or LVP to get rid of the tile. So that's going to do a couple of things, we're going to save on the waxing, the time and labor that it takes in the summertime to wax those things. And now we've got an item that should be durable enough, lasts us a while.
And less maintenance than carpet.
Exactly, so we're, those are the decisions we're trying to make so that we make sure that every dollar spent as efficiently as it possibly can and again, reaches many students as possible.
Well, Steve just corrected me, they replaced that, uh, last year, I'm sorry, but it is from the turf, from the.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Tom, we do appreciate doing everything you do. I mean, it's been a pleasure having you here.
Appreciate it, y'all have, y'all have tough, if I could, if I could magically make the money work and that way you could support every other, I would love to. I know that, that we're one of the largest recipients and I hate that, I hate coming here as one of the largest recipients in, in training. I, I'm telling you, we're going to do everything we can and, and I would love to be able to support everyone else. But if there's a chance that we can partner with any of these other groups to help support them and a, and a lot of times it's unfortunately a non-financial, but we want to be a partner, right? This is a community and, and our kids start it and if they can see it and then they see that that's who we're advocating for and that's who we're a part of, maybe, hopefully they'll stay here and help us, take, help take care of us as we get a little.
They have a question.
Yes ma'am.
I was just going to say that, well, and in your words, you know, since you guys do take care of our children, we have to take care of the people that take care of us.
Um, what about the carpet at Indian Valley, when, what's the plan to that in the library and in the office?
Well, the library especially, because I know they're getting wet, right, from getting mad. So that's part of our plan with this LVT, so I did, what did we do, six rooms at, you did s- two rooms at Indian Valley?
That's right.
Six rooms at Picecrest and then four at the high school.
We did ten at the high school.
And we're going to try and do something similar again this next year. So we're trying to get the rooms that need it the most to spend a certain amount of money every year to see how far we can go, right?
So there is a plan center rather than lighter though, for that carpet, particularly with that's been collecting moisture and.
And again, that, I try and lead some of that up to the, up to the building administrator, right? I say, okay, I can do this much, where are your priorities? Not always have to be my priorities, right? We have to work in unison as, as a group and as a team and, and I want to be able to support them as best I can.
Right.
If they tell me that's what they want done, they, they can use that money in, in that fashion. So to tell you where it's at on her priority list, I really couldn't at this time, uh, but as we get ready for the spring, then that'll be a conversation. Yes ma'am.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you guys, really appreciate that.
Is Tom the last one y'all?
Uh, I believe Tom is, uh, uh, no, Cusa Valley Medical Center, if anybody would like to talk about that.
Yes, we do need to, I forgot, I don't know, I was looking for the, um.
Let's just take the one twenty-five, it's the cheapest.
Will you have any insight?
Yeah, I don't see.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And we had a list.
You do, it's in the back of your binders with the exception of Laura, hers and Sarah's to her.
Is, is that, is that, this stuff on the list, Alex?
Yes ma'am, we copied it verbatim.
Is it, is the same thing right there, right?
Yes, her.
There's also, um, there's also a street in Reed, not here, that's behind the, um, hospital.
Right there.
It's actually two, it was a street behind the hospital and also where the, um, the old telepad used to be, they were, um, wanting that paid, it's paid, it's over there where the, um, the Allison Clinic is. So that's something else that, uh.
Oh, you just said gravel park.
Yeah, because they didn't, remember they took it out because the gravel kept.
But refresh my memory, we was going to do that, was it, was it one year ago or two years ago?
But it's private property.
That's right.
We can, I talked to Lynn, Lynn said we could do it if we wanted to, but we had to, um, I don't even say it.
So the benefit of the public and the town.
And then he just said, it's like, since you guys offered this to the city, we're going to do this for you.
And we, and, and some of their energy care can be, can be for that.
So, yeah, and you guys know the situation that happened with, um, I don't want to name anybody, but they didn't get that million dollars that they were counting on from. Yeah, and we didn't get our stuff either, so it would, you know, I think we do need to consider them and see where we can help them. Of course, we may not be able to meet all their needs, but since they did give us a list of stuff and those two pieces of, um, property that need payment.
We need to find out, but what, what about, I had mentioned this before, that two million dollars that's in the balance in another account that came from the cell of the hospital, yada, yada, way back when? I even mentioned it, mentioned it to Lynn, or even to me, and we got to talking about it and I mentioned it to Laura.
Yeah, we talked about it.
But basically giving that out to them as a loan and then pay it, pay it back at zero percent interest or even one percent interest or something.
This is, this is the, um.
That's where the money can come from.
I see what you're saying, and this is why I want us to all visit these boards. You go this month, you go to the hospital board this month, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so we can actually see how it works and I'm not saying no, but I'm, I'm not saying yes either. But we need, I think when we see it from their side of the fence, it show, it shows a different light. And you'll see their breakdown, like how they spent so much out on this, how they're not getting, you know, Medicare, um, reimbursements and I could be saying this wrong, so please don't quote me Facebook, but.
It's, it's a lot of the unpaid services.
Yeah, and then sometimes they even have to get attorneys to like sue insurance companies to get money back. So it's a lot that goes into the stuff that they do and that's why I said this time you'll go to their board meeting, because when I went, I got a lot of insight and I learned a lot, Lynn's been keeping all the information to himself and then Laura will go. But that's why I said we all need to visit all these places, because when you can see stuff, when you can see stuff from their perspective, you, you can understand, you can understand why they're asking us for these things and why they're saying it's going to work.
That's a simple solution, that we can keep doing it over and over and over, giving them a month's on and they pay it back to us over a set amount.
Well, we'll be working on a real problem with that, but they're spending nineteen million dollars a year on, on universal care and it's got to come from somewhere and the only solution is to stop providing that care if we can diminish these services, because there's no blank check, but they can keep writing a check. And we've got to figure out a way to not diminish that service, because it could affect the rest of the economy.
Yeah, and then the stuff we're going, the stuff that we're going to consider doing, y'all, it ain't going to put a dent in their budget. Like, it ain't, it ain't going to even put a dent in it, but I mean, we can't, we can't afford to fund the hospital either, but I guess the way I'm looking at it, like, look at Talladega, like you can't even, you can't even get pregnant in Talladega. Can't have a baby there, I know, I didn't say it that much, but you know what I'm saying? If we were to, something were to happen to our hospital, I think we would all be in trouble.
But I, I agree, we need to, and that's why I've, I've loved that idea that you come up with about three years ago, that should have helped them out with some of their capital needs, I, I like that idea.
And that's why I want to make sure you guys have all the list of everything. So not only is the list that we have in our package, there's also that street and Reed knows the street and then that, um, that piece of thing where the, um, tele, helipad thing was, so, so we may want to consider, you know, that as well. And we can decide that at our next meeting, so just look over all the stuff you have for them and then we can just put it to a little.
Towards the next meeting, I mean, we'll have to go through what we're going to do, what we ain't going to do.
No, we're going to have, we're going to have to have another meeting, because since we have everything that we're going to consider, Alex is going to give us a number on what we did with the, um, with the, with the departments. So we got a new number for the departments and we're going to have a number, a total number if we just level fund all the appropriations or a total number, number if we give the appropriations what they want. And that's when we'll know what we need to cut or not, and we may not have to cut anything, but if we do, then.
We're going to have to cut some.
I know it, we may, but I'm just saying, that's how, that's why we're going to have to have another meeting. Because right now we don't have, we don't have the total number in front of us. And then you just have to decide where you're going to make the cuts, like, I'm not saying that some aren't as important as others, but I mean, like I always say, everybody is the same but different.
That's right.
So there does need to be another meeting, so we can go through, once you get us.
After our council meeting, like not before, September fifth, after September fifth.
Or in the middle.
I bet, we're going to have to have it.
I mean, September fifth is, that's not right.
And I, and I, and we can't add anything.
September fifth is the next council.
That's next week.
We don't need to add anything home from September fifth either, so maybe that second council meeting, we can add an extra hour home to do this.
Or the week of the night, in between the council meetings.
Okay, well, yeah, the, the week after the fifth.
So I would like to address Ashton's comment about the two million dollars for the hospital. That resolution, I don't know if anybody's actually read it other than us, um, and the mayor I know has read it, but that is for national disasters and or emergencies.
Not what it says, it says emergency, the city can define an emergency, it doesn't say anything about that yet.
Emergency as far as sort of coming.
Somebody has to decide it's an emergency, doesn't mean you can make it up. And you have an emergency, and again, the key is, is that, as Ashton is proposing, is not giving them the money, it's loaning them the money, which is separately giving them the money as a way of freeing up the cash that they have to pay back.
We need more discussion on that, I don't know, I don't know if we need to, we need to be in a bank, I get, I, I know we need to do something, but I don't know if we need to loan money and hope they pay it back, and I'm sure they will pay it back, but what happens if something bad goes wrong and they're not able to pay it back? UAB buys it, like, or group would buy it?
That would be devastating, we should.
It may, it may be, but I mean, we're not in a bank, but.
But it's still an idea and.
I'm not saying not do any of that.
Well, it's still an idea and we can, um, consider all of those ideas, but it, it will, we'll discuss those at that meeting. So what is, let me pull out my phone, what is, um, do we have anything that, um?
The only thing we haven't talked about was transfers. The only thing we haven't talked about was transfers, where you guys and how much money you want put into each fund. Um, and please keep in mind that we told you from the get-go, we did not, um, put money aside for FY twenty-five for the master recreational facility. Walter handed out, well, I had Ashton hand out these papers today. Our first payment's going to be in April and by September thirtieth, we got to have two point five million.
Yeah, but as we also to discuss, um, with Alex, yeah, because we're planning to, the way it's looking, we're going to get, we're going to get the money sooner rather than later, if everything keeps rolling the way it's rolled.
Well, we've got that, the debt service total up to about three million, huh?
We took a million out for the fire truck.
So we've got two million.
But it's, it's two point four million, almost what, two point five? But keep in mind too, the way it was explained to me, and I hate Walter's gone, it's only how much additional money, because we just paid, we just paid out, we just paid out a bond last year, so he was saying it's not all new money. Because we've already been scheduled and we know we can already afford to pay.
We've been paying about eight hundred thousand.
It was one point three, it was one point three, so all we're having to come up with initially is one point one, one point two. We were already budgeted paying that.
Yeah, yeah, I see.
And then our payments after this year go up to three million.
Yeah.
But as you, as you know, we don't have that resolution intact for the following year, so that whole, say five million or whatever could be.
And we need to do that too, we, we need to do that, is, uh, do you have any, like, do you have something in place? Like some examples or, I know you went, um, I'm going to call her Stephanie, that's not.
Melanie.
Melanie for working on that, on how we should, um, how you guys recommend we should split that up? Because we know we have to allocate some towards our debt service.
We haven't had time.
So is that something we can, um, add to that work session that we're going to have when we finalize the budget and decide what we aren't, aren't going to, um, do?
Yes.
Okay, let's add that and also too, do you guys want to go ahead and add capital to that meeting as well?
See, I mean, add it, see if we can address it, we might not be able to, but just have it there in case. Are you looking at the week of the night, in between meetings?
So those three things on that work session, so finalizing the budget, everybody can just go home, look at everything and I'm pretty sure it's in your minds what you do and don't want to do, or what we are going to consider, but of course we still have to discuss it so we can come up with a number and, and then go from there. So Alex, you just let us know, you'll let us know how much we're over to as well, right? Do you know how much we're over now?
Um, without that resolution being rescinded, two point five million.
And once we rescind the resolution, resolution, I can't talk today, do you have a number once we rescind it? Or you don't have a number because you don't know how we're going to allocate it?
I didn't get this information from Walter till Friday evening and I was unavailable this weekend to work.
Okay. And then too, Alex, make a list, so what we're going to do with the, um, with the resolution, so we got to allocate some towards debt service, um, and the community center and there was something else we had to do, was it, um, was it capital?
Yes.
Capital, what else was on that list? And then the rest would just go into the general fund, so those are the three things we needed to prioritize, right?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, y'all agree?
Yep.
All right. Okay, but let's still have more.
And you want that discussed on the?
Oh, we didn't pick a day off.
You have a council meeting on the fifth, which is also interviews for the police chief.
Yeah, that's why I said we don't need to add anything extra to that, because, yeah, it's at three thirty, so you said you can over twelve, I cannot. What about that, what is that Monday, what is that following Monday?
The ninth.
Can you do, can we do Monday?
Yeah.
All right, so let's do that Monday, four o'clock, good.
She just told me what I'm doing.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good for that, I don't have it.
Can you send a reminder out?
Always.
Plug it in once you, I give any.
Always. And then we would like to ask for, uh, another council meeting at the end of the month or year end.
Closeout.
Yes, because that's where our problem is in our office.
Yes, like five minutes.
Can we do it, um, can we do it like eight o'clock in the morning? Is that too early, like, and we can just swing by and do it and I can just go home to work?
I may not be, but you, you just need three, because I may have.
Monday the thirtieth?
Monday the thirtieth, just fine.
I mean, if we need, but the only thing is if we do it in the evening, it's going to have to be like four, five. What's better for you?
The evening is better for us, um, but if you guys have to have it at eight, we'll just work the weekend.
No, we don't, I was just trying to go there.
Nah, we do it.
And then are we going to try and have a past budget before one October? If not, I got a plan for that, okay?
That's the goal for us to do it at that work session, that's why we don't, hopefully we don't have any other, um. Yeah. And also too, the numbers will reflect the increase as well too, right?
Yes.
I'm excited.
Evening, John.
What time?
What time, what time is your job?
Six thirty-eight.
I don't think that we have, it's just a work session.
Yeah.
We are already close to council meeting.
We done, yeah.